Hello, my name is Terry Reynolds of Save Video Productions. And tonight's meeting is the Fulton Common Council Meeting of November 1st, 1994. This month's meeting has been brought to you in part by Carol's Bridle, the one-stop shop for all your bridal needs. Carol's Bridle is located at Route 3 West Fulton, New York. For this year's prom, you can also find prom gowns and dresses of all types. At Carol's Bridle, you will be able to shop for your gown or rental of your gown. And we would also like to thank Nestle's for their sponsorships in the meetings of the Fulton Common Council. And another sponsor for the Fulton Common Council Meeting. For the Center for the Arts in Granby, William Michaels, Center for the Arts. My name is Terry Reynolds of Save Video Productions. If you would like to sponsor an upcoming Fulton Common Council Meeting, or Oswego County Legislation Meeting, Town of Valony Meeting, Town of Granby Meeting, Town of Minato Meeting, or the Town of Scruple Meeting, feel free and call me. My name is Terry Reynolds, my phone number is 598-5120. We are also looking for sponsorships for the upcoming future meetings of Oswego Government. If you would wish to find out more for the Center for the Arts, give them a call because they have person-to-person lessons. Now you'll be seeing the Fulton Common Council Meeting. The first one would be October for the special meeting, then we'll have preceding that would be Valony Town Board Meeting of Accepting the Economic Development Zone. And then we'll have November 1st, 1994 Fulton Common Council Meeting. Thank you very much, my name is Terry Reynolds, and have a good evening.
Would I do the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution, to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the Constitution of the United States of America. Any changes, additions, corrections, or deletions to the agenda? Alderman Tiramiji requested that that vehicle and traffic ordinance go on the agenda after the advance agenda of the now. Call a meeting order, keep your call at all. Mayor Bullard?
Here.
Alderman Lincoln?
Here.
Alderman Tiramiji?
Here.
Alderman Weston?
Here.
Alderman Cavallaro?
Here.
Alderman Trowbridge?
Here.
Alderman Allen?
Here.
All present. Where is this common council acting as lead agency under the State Environmental Review Act with the consent of the Town of Valony issued a positive declaration in furtherance of a resolution of this council dated February 15th, 1994, directed at preparation of a draft environmental impact statement for the proposed annexation of premises from the Town of Valony consistent of approximately 36 acres known as the River Glen Mall after optional scoping and direct filing of a SECRRA positive declaration and according to law. Res this council by resolution dated August 2nd, 1994 accepted the draft EIS for the proposed annexation for purposes of public comment established a comment period directing the filing of SECRRA notice of completion of draft environmental impact statement and directed the preparation of final environmental impact statement following the comment period and after identification of substantive comments. And whereas the final EIS was prepared and reviewed by the council which accepted same and authorized the filing of SECRRA notice of completion of final environmental impact statement by resolution dated October 4th, 1994. Whereas in furtherance of aforementioned resolution of October 4th, proposed SECRRA finding statement was prepared in advance of this meeting circulated to each member of the common council for review and consideration, a copy of which is attached here too. Now therefore be it resolved that the council as lead agency accepts the finding statements in form annexed here too and made part thereof and directs that it be executed by the mayor and filed and distributed according to law. Be it further resolved that the mayor and/or city attorney shall take such other additional action as may be necessary to further the intent of this resolution that this resolution shall take effect immediately. Mr. Dwyer, could you explain this resolution, please?
This resolution authorizes the filing of a finding statement. And if you remember, when I first appeared before you, I explained that the finding statement is the last act in the SECRRA process when a draft environmental impact statement has been prepared. The finding statement says in essence that you have fully complied with SECRRA, that you've referred, that you have reviewed all of the potential impacts regarding the annexation, not the construction, because the construction aspect of this has already been reviewed by the Town of Valony. The main issues here for review, if you recall, the EIS and so on, was the capacity of the city to handle sewer and water and provide that service to this area, and also the economic impacts mainly concerning taxes, reimbursement of taxes and loss of sales tax codes, all addressed. Now this is the final act, and the finding statement says in essence, go to your next step, which is the consideration of the annexation motion.
Well, you're up, Mr. Dwyer, second trip. Could you explain the next resolution also?
The second resolution before you is a recitation of the history of the annexation proposal that's been brought forth going back to last year. And if you recall there, you were required under the municipal annexation law to make a decision 90 days after the joint hearing, which was sometime, I think it was January the 20th. And we knew at that particular point that we could never complete the SECRRA process within 90 days, and the city and the town entered into a stipulation stating that the decision on annexation would be postponed until 20 days after the final act in SECRRA. Tonight, you're doing the final act in SECRRA, and before you is a resolution and an order which is required by the municipal annexation law authorizing the annexation of this property. There are filing requirements which will take place, then the town within 20 days from tomorrow, I believe would be whenever it would be filed, must make a determination either in favor of or against the proposed annexation. The resolution before you tonight is drawn as if you are in favor of the proposed resolution, and it recites that you have complied with the SECRRA process, and also recites that this is consistent with the stipulation you entered into with the town regarding the postponement of that 90-day period. If you'd like, I can explain what happens next. In the event, in the event that either board declines the annexation and the other board approves it, the approving board can commence in Article 78 proceeding and before the appellate division fourth department that refers the case to a three-person panel including one judge and retired judge of the Supreme Court to hear the case, hear facts regarding the annexation, the benefits inuring therefrom to the annexing municipality, to the municipality that's losing to the property and to the property itself. And they make a report, it's returned to the appellate division, and they make an eventual determination on that. We hope that that won't be necessary.
I'll move it.
Second.
Alderman Lincoln?
Yes.
Alderman Tiramiji?
Yes.
Alderman Weston?
Yes.
Alderman Cavallaro?
Yes.
Alderman Trowbridge?
Alderman Allen?
Yes.
It's Kerry, your honor. Whereas a petition pursuant to Article 17 of general municipal law and the municipal annexation law was presented to this council of the City of Fulton on November 18th, 1993 for the annexation of approximately 36-plus acres in the Town of Valony to the City of Fulton. Said territory being described in said petition, a copy of which is annexed here too and made part thereof as Exhibit A. Whereas upon due notice being published according to law, a joint hearing of this council and the Town of Valony was duly held on said petition for annexation according to law in such cases made and provided at the Town Hall of Town of Valony on January 20th, 1994, at which time all parties interested in the matter were heard and all objections presented. Whereas the aforementioned described proposed annexation and annexion under the State Environmental Quality Review Act requiring compliance therewith by each involved municipality, City of Fulton, Town of Valony. Whereas the Town of Valony issued a SECRRA positive declaration on February 10th, 1994, and this council issued a positive declaration on February 15th, 1994, including declaring itself as lead agency. Whereas the Town of Valony by letter dated May 2nd, 1994 consented to this common council acting as lead agency under SECRRA, and thereafter the petitioner for annexation, the Town of Valony and the City of Fulton entered into a certain stipulation extending the 90-day time period within which the governing board of the City of Fulton and the Town of Valony must make a decision to either approve or disapprove said annexation. And it appearing that said 90 days was insufficient to comply with provisions of SECRRA, it being stipulated that such decision would be made by each of the aforementioned governing boards within 20 days after the conclusion of the SECRRA process by the city as lead agency with either the filing of a finding statement or a negative declaration as the case may be. Whereas this council by prior resolution of this date has approved the filings and promulgation of SECRRA finding statement making certain required determinations concerning the proposed annexation. Whereas the common council has considered the designation of the City of Fulton as an economic development zone in 1994 and the benefits therefrom that would potentially ensure to the benefit of the businesses located in the River Glen Mall proposed for annexation including, one, wage tax credit for hiring employees and newly created jobs, two, a power rate, this account for electrical service if certain criteria was met, and three, an investment tax credit under the corporate franchise tax. Whereas the common council of the City of Fulton has duly considered the attached petition and the evidence and testimony presented at the hearing on January 20th, 1994, the draft environmental impact statement, the final environmental impact statement, and the findings approved herein this date. Now therefore be it resolved that the common council of the City of Fulton finds as follows: One, that the aforementioned petition for annexation annexed here too complies in form in contact with municipal annexation law. Two, that the proposed annexation of the 36-plus acres described in the petition situated in the Town of Valony, County of Oswego, to the City of Fulton, County of Oswego, is in the overall public interest regarding, A, the territory proposed to be annexed, B, the City of Fulton as a local government to which the territory is proposed to be annexed, C, the Town of Valony as a local government in which the territory is presently situated, and that such annexation will allow the City of Fulton to provide adequate sewer and water facilities without expansion of those facilities compared to the required construction of new facilities by the Town of Valony should such proposed annexation not occur. Three, the City of Fulton will benefit from said annexation financially as a result of increased sales tax revenues which would be lost to both the City of Fulton and the Town of Valony should the annexation not occur, and the Town of Valony would be, will be reimbursed for in excess of lost real estate taxes by the City of Fulton should such annexation occur without any responsibility for provisions of any services. Four, the designation of the City of Fulton as an environmental development zone enables commercial and retail businesses located on premises to be eligible for certain economic benefits not otherwise provided if annexation is denied, including the wage tax credit, power rate discount, and an investment tax credit. Five, there shall be no change of school district boundaries as a result of said annexation, and the City of Fulton shall be responsible as primary provider of fire protection, road maintenance, and other similar services. Now therefore, it is ordered that the consent and approval of the common council of the City of Fulton is hereby given to the annexation of the territory now situated in the Town of Valony and described in the aforementioned petition attached here too and made part as Exhibit A to the City of Fulton after this common council has complied with and concluded the required requirements of SECRRA. Second. Alderman Lincoln?
Yes. I had a question, just wondered, excuse me, item four there, the designation of the EDC. By virtue of annexation, do we have to go and extend a new boundary, or is it already automatic for the EDC?
You would have to extend the boundary.
You would have to extend it.
The EDC boundary.
Right.
Alderman Tiramiji?
Yes.
Alderman Weston?
Yes.
Alderman Cavallaro?
Yes.
Alderman Trowbridge?
Yes.
Alderman Allen?
Yes.
It's Kerry, your honor. Resolved that a proposal from the City of Fulton for an agreement to board dogs from the City Animal Control Department at the Valony Dog Kennel be submitted to the Valony Town Board for acceptance as follows. One, the city and the town enter into an agreement whereby the town will provide their shelter to the city for an annual cost of $4,000. The city will provide food for its own animals. Two, the town will have preference in the use of the shelter. If the unlikely situation of the shelter becoming overcrowded occurs, the city will make other arrangements for their dogs until room becomes available to them again. The city picks up an average of 100 dogs per year. Three, it will be the responsibility of the Fulton Dog Control Officer to handle all of Fulton's animals. The town is responsible for boarding only. Dogs will be boarded and removed per the requirements of the Agriculture and Marcus laws of the state of New York. Four, the city will provide all transportation of its own dogs. Five, the city will be responsible for the euthanization and/or any medical expenses for Fulton dogs. Six, the city will be allowed access to the Valony shelter for the purpose of placing or removal of its dogs. Seven, the city will provide and any and all required paperwork pertaining to the dogs placed in the shelter to the town. Eight, this agreement will become effective immediately upon the approval of both the Town Board and the City Common Council. Nine, this agreement is valid for one year from the date of approval with review for renewal from year to year. I think Alderman Weston, and I think Alderman Allen, both have been to the dog facility. Do you want to talk about the need for this?
I know that Alderman Allen went in the spring to view both facilities, and I had the opportunity yesterday to talk to both animal control officers and to tour both facilities. I found that the Valony facility was more than adequate, an excellent facility. The animal control officer takes very good care of the facility and very good care of the animals. When I was there yesterday, he had just one dog there, and they have room for, they have 14 cubicles that they can use. So as far as I was concerned, I thought it was an excellent facility, and if it's an opportunity for us to share services and to split the cost of operating, I think it'd be an excellent idea.
I've visited our dog pound several times, but I would just add that I was present when the Town of Valony discussed this proposal, and they have objections and/or stipulations to be done in this, so however, I see nothing wrong with this.
I would, sure, I was at the same meeting, and I guess one of the problems was from a few of the council members there was the cost involved. They thought the $4,000 wasn't enough money. But my point of view is on it, I mean, it's revenue for the town, so you know, they ought to be willing to accept this $4,000 as a fair estimate, I guess, as to, you know, how we can take care of our dogs. And for the town to refuse $4,000 in revenue, you know, there's not much more I could say to that.
Didn't, this was not the original draft of this agreement?
Yeah, this is the one they had.
Is this exactly the original?
Yeah, mm-hmm.
Okay, I thought this one had a couple of changes with the title.
I haven't noticed anything.
No? I didn't see, I didn't have a copy of the original. So I...
Looks like basically what they had. I think one of their objections was because the kennel's location to residences, they're worried about the increased noise and all sorts of...
Somebody want to add to this?
I do.
But I think that they built that with the intention of having all the stalls used, so that indicates that question.
I said this renewable year to year, so...
This is the first time.
What, after the first year, it all goes well, presumably, you sign another 100 bucks every year, you can redo it?
Well, it would have to be agreed to by both parties.
Oh, sure.
They may not want to do it for some reason, or the city may not want to do it.
The fact is there, it's not like this is one year only, and then after that forget it no matter how?
Well, I think it's a trial right now. You don't really know how it's going to work. I don't think it'd be prudent to go any more than a year at this point.
Right, but if all goes well, you can't come out, leave only one, and forget it a little bit, you know, it's just, if there's no problems, there are no complaints.
There's no problems unless they get into an overcrowded situation.
The animal control officer seemed to indicate to me that he didn't think there would be any overcrowding. He felt he had the facility to handle whatever animals that we might have.
So for Mr. Allen, just somebody with a second. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Resolved that Chapter 165-61 Schedule 17 of the Vehicle and Traffic Ordinance of the City of Fulton, New York entitled Parking Prohibited Certain Hours be amended to read as follows. Fraud will have west side, 7:00 a.m., 3:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, location from Oak Street to Chestnut Street. Chestnut Street, both sides, 7:00 a.m., 3:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, from West 4th Street to William Giller Drive. Denisey Place, west side, 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, from Chestnut Street to Cedar Street. Park Ave. on west side, 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, from Oak Street to Chestnut Street. Mr. Tiramiji will reduce this resolution, but I take this as a resolve of the problems at the school.
Right. I'm not reading this resolution correctly. The idea was to repeal the ordinance that prohibited parking during these hours. Is that the way, am I reading this right?
Delete.
On the top, Jim, it says delete from the top of the name of street.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see that. Thank you. Precisely, last year, there was a construction going on at the high school area and overflow parking around these streets, you know, around the high school, these streets in fact, and we asked to put restricted time parking there. I canvassed the neighborhood once again at the request of a few residents, and 100% of those canvass were asking to remove this restriction at this time.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Motion to adjourn into executive session pending litigation and annexation.
I'll second it.
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
For the benefit of the press. You will do no other business except that and I should forewarn you and if we do do it, I will let you know that we might just schedule a public hearing, which would occur in November.
And we had copies of the first two resolutions, they weren't in our package.
Certainly.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with never being justice for all.
Barb, will you call the roll, please?
Here.
Here.
After this way.
Here.
Mr. Smart.
Here.
Mr. Warner.
Here.
Supervisor.
Here. Uh, first order of business tonight is to, uh, authorize a transfer of funds that we need to do this evening. Uh, resolution ninety-four dash one ninety-five, would someone like to move it?
Do we, do we have it?
I don't have a copy.
I don't have a copy.
We were all in there.
Well, we got a few more here.
All right, I'll move to authorize the supervisor to transfer funds from interest serial bonds eight nine seven one zero point seven of twenty-two hundred and sixty dollars and interest bond anticipation eight nine seven three oh point seven, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars, twenty-five cents for a total of three thousand thirty-five dollars and twenty-five cents to employee benefits unemployment insurance eight nine zero five zero point eight of three thousand three hundred and fifty, thirty-five dollars and twenty-five cents.
Can I second?
I'll second it. Second, but there's a clarif- it's, it's not three thousand three hundred, just it's three thousand, it's three thousand thirty-five dollars, not three hundred.
Right, correct. Any other discussion or questions from the board?
We, this, this is money, just so I know where this money's coming, the interest that we've received from our serial bonds, where did the money come from?
This is money that we budgeted for the interest on our serial bond and our bond anticipation note that we did not use this year. We paid, already paid those off and this is extra money that was in that account.
In that account.
We're transferring it out to cover the, uh, unemployment insurance benefit.
Okay.
Barb, will you poll the council?
Here.
Aye.
Mr. Ridgeway.
Aye.
Mr. Smart.
Aye.
Mr. Warner.
Aye.
Supervisor.
Aye. Okay, next order of business, resolution one ninety-six. Um, and what this resolution pertains to is the, uh, finding statement on SECRE, uh, concerning the annexation issue. And I'll read it. Um, "The town board of the town of Volney and the county of Oswego, state of New York, met in special session at the town municipal offices in Volney, New York on the twenty-fifth day of October nineteen ninety-four at six PM local time. The meeting was called to order by town supervisor Howard Rose. Following members were present: Claudia Smart, Jess Warner, William Pierce, James Ridgeway, absent none. The following resolution was moved, seconded and passed." Oh, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm reading ahead of myself here. Okay. "Whereas both the town board of the town of Volney and the common council of the city of Fulton have conducted a coordinated review of the proposed annexation of properties known as the River Glen Mall to the city of Fulton from the town of Volney pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act (SECRE) and whereas the final EIS was prepared and reviewed and accepted by the city of Fulton, which authorized the filing of a SECRE notice of completion of final environmental impact statement by resolution dated October fourth, nineteen ninety-four, and whereas the city of Fulton as lead agency issued its SECRE finding statement on October nineteenth, nineteen ninety-four, and whereas a proposed SECRE finding statement on behalf of the town of Volney as an involved agency was prepared in advance of this meeting and circulated to each member of the town board for review and consideration, a copy of which is attached hereto. Now, now therefore be it resolved that the town board of the town of Volney as an involved agency accepts the finding statement informed, inform annexed hereto and made a part thereof and directs that it be executed by the supervisor and filed and distributed according to law six NYCRR section six seventeen point ten. Aye." Would someone like to move that?
I'll move it.
Any discussion by the board?
I'm sorry, yeah, this is what we have here, Howard. This is the draft, uh, that, that we received Saturday, or, uh, Friday night.
Is this the finding statement you're referring to?
The State Environmental Quality Review finding statement.
Right.
And that's this statement, that's what we're accepting.
Exactly.
Aye.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Barb, will you poll the council?
Yes. Mr. Ridgeway?
Aye.
Mr. Smart?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Supervisor.
Yes. Resolution one ninety-seven. Um, this resolution has to do with the request by the city of Fulton to annex the mall property and, uh, I'll move the following resolution. "Whereas a petition pursuant to article seventeen of the general municipal law was presented to the town board of the town of Volney on November eighteenth, nineteen ninety-three for the annexation of certain territory in the town of Volney to the city of Fulton, said territory being described in said petition which is annexed hereto as Exhibit A, and whereas a joint hearing of the town board of the town of Volney and the city council of the city of Fulton was duly held on said petition for annexation according to the law in such cases made and provided to municipal building of the town of Volney located at County Route Six within the town of Volney on January twentieth, nineteen ninety-four, at which time all parties interested in the matter were heard and all objections presented. And whereas the town board of the town of Volney has duly considered said petition and the evidence presented at said hearing and whereas by written stipulation dated March thirty-first, nineteen ninety-four, the town of Volney and the city of Fulton agreed that in order to complete the review process relative to this annexation petition pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, the time specified under section seven one one of the general municipal law for making their respective determinations would be extended to within twenty days after the conclusion of the SECRE process by the city of Fulton as lead agency. And whereas both the town board of the town of Volney and the common council of the city of Fulton have conducted a coordinated review of the proposed annexation pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act and the city of Fulton as lead agency on or about October nineteenth, nineteen ninety-four, having issued its finding statement and the town of Volney as an involved agency on October twenty-fifth, nineteen ninety-four, having issued its finding statement, thus concluding the SECRE process thereon. Now therefore be it resolved that the town board of the town of Volney finds as follows: One, that the aforementioned petition for annexation substantially complies in form and content with article seventeen of the general municipal law. Two, that the proposed annexation of certain territory in the town of Volney to the city of Fulton as described in the aforementioned petition is not in the overall public interest in that, A, the proposed territory to be annexed and the proposed shopping center are already being provided under private contract with the city of Fulton water and sewer. Therefore, there exists no present need of these services by the territory to be annexed and that its present needs are being met. B, future needs of the territory for additional water and sewer are not presently defined or certain. The town of Volney is as capable and willing as the city of Fulton to provide for any such future needs of the territory should they arise at costs that would be competitive to those imposed upon the territory by the city of Fulton. The town of Volney is capable of providing unlimited water supply to the territory through the town's Owens Road number one water district that presently exists. Furthermore, the town is more, is both willing and capable of providing for both present and future sewage treatment for the territory in short duration through the establishment of the requisite district and the construction of individual packaged treatment plants. C, question exists whether the city of Fulton could now or in the future adequately, adequately provide for the present and future water and sewer needs of the proposed territory without incurring added costs to upgrade both its sewer and water systems in order to correct certain identified problems concerning sewer treatment plant overflows and to increase water supply capacity. D, the development is located south of the city of Fulton on the east side of the Oswego River. It is served by infrastructure that was planned without this annexation being considered. If improvements, upgrades or repairs become necessary to support this development, those costs will be borne by all of the city of Fulton. With this property remaining in the town of Volney, costs for sewer and water will be borne only by the development. Only the benefited properties are charged. E, the annexation of the subject, subject territory as developed will result in a significant loss to the already drastically eroding tax base of the town. While underestimated and not based upon valuations of the property as developed, the city's valuation of the subject development shows the real estate tax loss to the town of Volney is certain and is significant. The proportionate relationship of that tax loss to tax base and resulting impacts compared to the alleged relative benefits to the city support a conclusion that the economic impact of this tax loss to the town far exceeds any comparable proposed tax benefit realized by the city as a result of annexation. F, the city claims a loss of sales tax revenues at three percent. The three percent being the city's self-imposed sales tax added to the state's four percent sales tax for certain sales within the city. However, that so-called loss referred to by the city is in truth not a loss but a potentially a gain realized by the forced acquisition of the development. Any direct impact other than normal market forces already in place and ongoing that the development, if not annexed, would have upon the city's existing sales tax revenues or its retail business has never been addressed by the city. G, the city's espoused proposal to pay the town double any tax loss suffered by the town due to removal of the subject premises from its tax rolls is by its terms at least limited in duration and potentially non-effectuating. By its terms, such proposed payment will not be realized after any annexation except upon prior agreement between the town and the city and therefore does not constitute any objectively realizable benefit to the town. H, primary access to roads to the territory would, would remain in the town of Volney after annexation. I, the commercial and industrial tax bases of the town of Volney has been significant on the, significant on the decline, especially with the pullout of the Miller Brewery located within the town. The removal of the territory from the town's commercial tax base will have a significant adverse impact upon the residential tax obligation of the town of Volney. Furthermore, the annexation of the proposed territory would create a potential avenue whereby any future development of the town's commercial and industrial base in the area of the town planned and established for such development could be met by other attempts to remove such development from the town through the expedient of annexation. Therefore, the presently proposed annexation would have a devastating effect upon the future planned development of the town within its neighboring commercial industrial districts. J, the proposed territory and the shopping center comply with the town zoning and the requisite site plans have been approved by the town. The owners of the territory have petitioned the town for zone change and site plan approval prior to filing the subject petition for annexation. K, the subject proposed territory to be annexed has not been the subject of any historical or present developmental planning on the part of the city of Fulton and is not reasonably within a planned growth path for the city. Furthermore, there has been no showing of any reasonable need for the city to grow through the extension of its borders. L, the boundaries of the subject territory located within the town of Volney have been drawn by the petitioner to purposely exclude residential properties who might voice an objection to the proposed annexation. The proposed territory as drawn is contiguous to the city of Fulton at a span of approximately, of only approximately ninety-five feet. As a result, the annexation as proposed would give the town an irregular boundary, in some cases creating a situation where certain residential town properties would be bordered on three sides by the city of Fulton boundary. The distorted borders would not promote orderly development. M, there exists no reasonable governmental need on the part of the city of Fulton for the proposed annexation. The singular motive for the city's pursuit of the annexation is the attempted avoidance of having a commercial establishment located within the town that is presently free from the imposition of a county sales tax. The motive is to curtail any competition any such outside facility might present to the merchants of the city. Presently, the county of Oswego stands alone within the state of New York and not providing for a countywide sales tax. The loss of any sales tax revenue is seen to be a bogus concern relative to the legislative purpose permitting annexation and that such losses, if any, would be generally realized by purchases made in, in any area outside the city of Fulton, including counties adjoining the county of Oswego. The issue of sales tax has nothing particularly to do with the proposed territory. Furthermore, the issue of the loss of any sales tax revenue is not seen as an annexation issue whereby one municipality seeks to extend its borders by taking of the territory of another. Rather, the sales tax issue is more appropriately addressed by the petitioning of county government to establish a countywide sales, sales tax as every other county within the state of New York. In fact, upon information and belief, the county of Oswego has been considering the adoption of a countywide sales tax in the relative near future. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved and ordered that the consent and approval of the town board of the town of Volney is hereby denied as to the annexation of the territory now situated in the town of Volney and described in the aforementioned petition to the city of Fulton. The question of the adoption of the foregoing resolution and order was duly put to a roll call which resulted as follows, and we'll get to that. Um, I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Discussion from the council.
Has there been any more attempt made to you, Howard, on the part of the city of Fulton to negotiate this issue?
There's been discussion one-on-one with different individuals in the council here and there, but no, um, organized attempt, no, Jim, and as you know, I've tried to do that myself in the past.
Because, uh, I was approached, um, last Saturday with the possibility that there was still possibly an opening for a negotiations of this issue. I would assume that if we pass this particular motion, uh, our next step is court. I, I don't see, um, a resolution of negotiations after this, or do you see a possibility still existing for it?
I, well, I, I'm, I'm going to ask our attorney if you don't mind, Ron, um, does this, if this vote, this is our attorney, Ron Carr, if our vote tonight is, uh, against the annexation, does that close the door on any other negotiations that may be possible in the future, or is it a definite court date and, uh, we'll have to go all the way with this, or, uh, do we have time to work out something else between the time we have to go to court?
I don't think, uh, my sense is, is that this vote, while being determinative and setting in motion the path, the potential for a, a court, uh, whether or not there are court proceedings, uh, will be, uh, determined by the city of Fulton if this resolution as, as read would pass. Uh, so that becomes a potential, uh, although I guess we can take, kind of take a guess what we have. I don't think this would foreclose further discussions up to the point in time, frankly, until a court would, uh, ultimately resolve the issue.
So anytime between now and when it goes to court, if the city and the town would agree on any options here?
It might take, it might take another resolution to rescind a resolution, but, uh, uh, I, I, my sense tells me that that still could be done up until the time that, of course, it ultimately gets determined by, uh, the appellate vision for a department. Should it go there?
Okay.
So the door is still open.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Barb, will you poll the council?
Mr. Here.
I'm not opening the floor to discuss.
No, yes means that the annexation is, you're against annexation, is that correct?
This is a motion to deny.
Correct, this is a motion to deny.
A yes, a yes vote is to deny the annexation, deny approval. A no vote would be, yeah.
When you're ready, I'll poll the council.
Mr. Here?
Yes.
Mr. Ridgeway?
Yes.
Mr. Smart?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Supervisor.
Uh, before I do vote on this, I just want to make clear my statements that I made in the past, and that is that I was hoping that there would be some kind of a negotiated agreement. I really didn't want to see it go this far or any further than this, um, but it's obvious that my board is, uh, denying this annexation and I'm not going to fight my board, I'm going to work with them and pursue what, uh, the majority of this board wishes, so I'm going to vote yes. Okay, um, I move to close the meeting.
A second.
Barb, will you poll the council?
Mr. Here?
Aye.
Mr. Ridgeway?
Aye.
Mr. Smart?
Aye.
Mr. Warner?
Aye.
Supervisor.
Aye. Thank you for coming.
Are there any changes, additions, corrections, or deletions to the agenda?
Yes, I'd like to make three notations. Number one, I'd like to move item seventeen to the top of the agenda. I'd also like to move number twenty-one to after number two. And also, I'd like to move that we go into executive session, propending litigation on annexation.
Is item thirty-four? Is item thirty-four?
Yes.
Are we running in agreement with those changes?
Hi. All right. Call the meeting to order. Is Ed Vanderhayden here and his wife, Chris? Please come forward. For those of you that don't know Ed, Ed has been employed by the city for more than thirty years. This building and the old city hall are kept and maintained by Ed. This building is part of Ed's life, Ed has been the custodian of this building for the twenty-five years that this building has been here. Five years previous to that, the old city hall has fallen down and broken down. So with Ed in mind, from my point of view, Ed's home, my point of view, the bureau has working at this plaque for thirty years in meritorious service to this city. Ed, congratulations. Please call the roll.
Mayor.
Here.
Alderman Lincoln.
Here.
Alderman Teramidji.
Here.
Alderman Weston.
Here.
Alderman Cavallaro.
Here.
Alderman Trowbridge.
Here.
Alderman Allen.
Here.
I'll present.
Please read the first item.
Resolve that the minutes of the common council meetings held on October fourth and October eighteenth are hereby approved.
I'll move it. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. We're going to do twenty-one now, Beth.
Yes. Yes. It's a meeting the council held on October fourth, public hearing was held relative to a proposed local law to establish the Bureau of Code Enforcement. Public members of the council all had an opportunity to express their views regarding the proposed local law. Whereas the public hearing was closed at that time with no action taken, whereas this council wishes to take action on said proposal of local law at this time, now would therefore be it resolved, the proposed local law to establish the Bureau of Code Enforcement is hereby approved.
I'll move it.
I'll second for discussion. Before we vote on the creation of this code enforcement bureau, I'd like to state that I have not been happy with many areas of this bureau, as I've stated over the past several meetings. The organization of this bureau has cost the city engineer's job, has demoted the former code enforcement, has demoted the former director of code enforcement, and will serve as the impetus to setting in place a variety of new fees under a bureaucracy that the public should not necessarily have to bear. However, as a result of the public hearing, two basic points that were touched upon have been revised, and I thank Mr. Vaughn for yielding to the wishes that were made here, and I'd like to commend Mr. Joseph Langley for so ably debating a particular section of code that would have been counterproductive had we kept it in this legislation. Mr. Langley's debate had to do with the requirement of stamped mechanical drawings that has now been eliminated as it should have been. Clearly, the state education law already had parameters built in as to when to require stamped plans. Mr. Langley had the foresight to recognize this and bring about the proper revision. The other point had to do with the designation of fire marshal by the Fire and Police Commission. I oppose this idea on two fronts. Most importantly, if I'm the fire chief charged with carrying out the enforcement of the Fire Prevention and Building Code, I wouldn't want a subordinate of my department named by a not-so-autonomous commission to control this important arm without my direct supervision, nor would I want a subordinate reporting to anyone other than myself without my input. Secondly, I find where the Fire and Police Commission does not have the authority under the charter to appoint or designate anyone other than the chief, assistant chief, and paid fireman as relates to the fire department. Perhaps the current fire chief does not find a problem with this, but that does not speak for any future chief who has a military or a paramilitary background. This legislation places total authority of executing state fire prevention in building code and city laws and ordinances under one man's authority. It diminishes the plumbing board and electrical boards' authority and infringes upon the planning commission's processes. I maintain we had the proper staff in place to reorganize and the legislation was already on the books. What has changed is the legislation we now have will be the foundation for a revenue generator to help fund this bureau. Thank you.
Any other comment?
I'd like to comment. Early on in this administration, we made a commitment to a better code enforcement in the city. We felt that the creation of a bureau would solve that problem. There's a great deal of time that went into the proposals that were set forth. We were very fortunate to obtain the services of Dan Vaughn, who came to us with a great deal of experience, who has been an excellent administrator, has put into place many of the procedures which we need in order to carry out the work of the bureau. I think that this is a positive move that we've made. I think it's going to improve the appearance of the city. I think it's going to improve the standards. I think we're going to set new parameters and new guidelines in what we feel is the kind of city we would like.
Mayor, I'd like to add one other comment. As far as the fees go, I've heard many comments prior to taking office and since taking office that the city or government should run more like a business, and so doing, we need to cover the cost of doing business, and I see those fees as helping to do that. Thank you. Other discussion? Please call the roll, Mr. Cheater.
Alderman Lincoln.
No.
Alderman Teramidji.
No.
Alderman Weston.
Yes.
Alderman Cavallaro.
Yes.
Alderman Trowbridge.
Yes.
Alderman Allen. Motion is carried.
Jeff Patcher.
from the Division of Housing and Community Renewal for our third home project in the city for rehab of owner-investor home, or owner-occupied homes in the city of Fulton, and we will be taking this project on in 1995. The governor of New York and the staff of the HCR congratulate you and congratulate us on behalf of you.
Thank you.
Is this a normal proceeding, Jim? Jeff, is this a normal proceeding?
Thank you, Jeff. I just want to, just want to add something. I want to congratulate once again the CDA on the tremendous job that they've done in securing the grants that we've had for the past ten months. They've done a super job, and without that financing, a lot of the things that are happening in Fulton wouldn't happen. So thank you to Jeff and Carol Rodelage and the entire staff of the CDA. Any other comments from the council? On behalf of the council, Jeff, thank you very much, and thank everybody in the CDA.
Whereas the meeting the council held on October fourth, the city clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held at this meeting of November one, common council chambers in municipal building relative to proposed local law which would add section C-152-JI to the city charter to be entitled Housing Maintenance Rental Permits. Mayor declares the hearing open.
Dan, Mr. Vaughn, could you talk to us about the rental permits?
This basic legislation has to, deals with the extension of time for which a rental permit is good for. It was originally two years and has now been extended for a period of five years a rental permit will be good for. The reason for that is that we could not handle it with the staff that we have to do all the rental permits within a two-year period, and so I extended that. The other major change in this portion deals with when a person obtains a rental permit in the hope of selling his property, he can now transfer that permit without paying an additional fee. For the first six months after you've acquired your rental permit as owner, you can transfer it to a new owner without paying any fees. This has been a problem in the past, and I wanted to clear that point up, so that's also a part of this appropriation and change.
Thank you.
Basically, that's it.
Thank you. Any comments? Any comments from the council?
I just have one question. Mr. Vaughn, if you, if you could answer it, what is the penalty for the violation of this section due to?
For not obtaining it?
Yes.
I would.
Well, the penalty, Jim, is that the, if you don't have the permit, then you can't occupy the property. That would give the city the right to terminate the occupancy until the permit was acquired.
Thank you.
Declare the hearing closed.
As the public members of the council and all tenants have had an opportunity to express their views regarding the proposed local law, now therefore be resolved, proposed local law to add section C-152-JI to the city charter to be entitled Housing Maintenance Rental Permits is hereby approved.
Somebody want to offer that? I'll move it. Alderman Lincoln.
I've been abstaining because I own rental property in the city of Fulton.
Alderman Teramidji.
Yes.
Alderman Weston.
Yes.
Alderman Cavallaro.
Yes.
Alderman Trowbridge.
Yes.
Alderman Allen. Motion is carried.
Next item.
It's a meeting the council held on October fourth, the city clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for this meeting of November first relative to a proposal to allow small businesses, commercial properties on a voluntary basis to be charged five dollars fifty cents per month for garbage and recyclable collection with the understanding that there is a five-bag limit per week, including recyclables. Mayor Buller will now declare the hearing open.
The hearing is open. Is anyone here to talk about the business garbage collection fee?
Sal Lonza, Fulton, New York. Mayor, I think that this would be a good law for small businesses. I have a small business, and when the new law went into effect, I noticed that the garbage, my garbage wasn't picked up and Keybank's garbage wasn't picked up, and I contacted Mr. Allen. Mr. Allen got right on it for me and took care of the problem. I was kind of annoyed that I had to go to the city hall and purchase stickers, and I feel that, you know, I pay taxes here in the city of Fulton, I employ people, and if I put out three or four bags of garbage plus recyclables, I shouldn't, I feel I shouldn't have to pay two dollars for the recyclables. No one else has to pay it. As a business, I wouldn't mind if I was charged five fifty or seven fifty per month, doesn't matter, you know, as a commercial business, if it's picked up because I don't want to go out to the dump. As an alternative mayor, what I could have done is, I live in On behalf of the council, Jeff, thank you very much. Thank everybody in the CDA.
Where's the meeting the council held on October 4th? The city clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held at this meeting of November 1st. Common Council Chambers in Municipal Building, relative to proposed local law which would add Section C-152-JI to the city charter to be entitled Housing Maintenance Rental Permits. Mayor declares the hearing open.
Dan, Mr. Vaughn, could you talk to us about the rental permits?
This basic legislation deals with the extension of time for which a rental permit is good for. It was originally two years and has now been extended for a period of five years a rental permit will be good for. The reason for that is that we could not handle it with the staff that we have to do all the rental permits within a two-year period, and so I extended that. The other major change in this portion deals with when a person obtains a rental permit in the hope of selling his property, he can now transfer that permit without paying an additional fee. For the first six months after you've acquired your rental permit as owner, you can transfer it to a new owner without paying any fees. This has been a problem in the past, and I wanted to clear that point up, so that's also a part of this appropriation and change.
Thank you.
Basically, that's it.
Thank you. Are there any comments? Any comments from the council?
I just have one question. Mr. Vaughn, if you could answer it, what is the penalty for the violation of this section due to?
For not obtaining it?
Yes.
I would...
Well, the penalty, Jim, is that if you don't have the permit, then you can't occupy the property. That would give the city the right to terminate the occupancy until the permit was acquired.
Thank you.
Does the public and members of the council and all tenants have had an opportunity to express their views regarding the proposed local law? Now therefore be resolved the proposed local law to add Section C-152-JI, the city charter to be entitled Housing Maintenance Rental Permits is hereby approved. Somebody want to offer that?
I'll move it.
Cavallaro.
Second.
Alderman Lincoln.
I've been abstaining because I own rental property in the city of Fulton.
Alderman Teramigi.
Yes.
Alderman Weston.
Yes.
Alderman Cavallaro.
Yes.
Alderman Trowbridge.
Yes.
Alderman Allen.
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Next item.
It's a meeting the council held on October 4th. The city clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for this meeting of November 1st, relative to a proposal to allow small businesses, commercial properties, on a voluntary basis, to be charged $5.50 per month for garbage and recyclable collection, with the understanding that there is a five-bag limit per week, including recyclables. Mayor Buller will now declare the hearing open.
The hearing is open. Is anyone here to talk about the business garbage collection fee?
Sal Lonze of Fulton, New York. Mayor, I think that this would be a good law for small businesses. I have a small business, and when the new law went into effect, I noticed that my garbage wasn't picked up and Keybank's garbage wasn't picked up, and I contacted Mr. Allen. Mr. Allen got right on it for me and took care of the problem. I was kind of annoyed that I had to go to the City Hall and purchase stickers, and I feel that, you know, I pay taxes here in the city of Fulton. I employ people, and if I put out three or four bags of garbage plus recyclables, I feel I shouldn't have to pay $2 for the recyclables. No one else has to pay it. As a business, I wouldn't mind if I was charged $5.50 or $7.50 per month, doesn't matter, you know, as a commercial business, if it's picked up, because I don't want to go out to the dump. As an alternative mayor, what I could have done is, I live in the city of Fulton on South Street, I could take my garbage and bring it home and just put it right in front of my...
House.
House. Or, Mayor, I could just go next door to the building that I own and put it right in front there, which is what I've been doing. So, the city is perfectly legal. The city loses out on money. So, I think I mentioned this to Mr. Allen on the phone. He said he was going to get on it with a public hearing and with the other Republican councilmen. I've always expressed this to Mr. Lincoln and Mr. Teramigi at our meetings, said, "Why aren't commercial establishments taken care of?" And I think it's a good law, and if it's $5.50, that's fine. Thank you.
Anyone else here to talk about trash and garbage?
Yes. My name is Tim Farrell. I own Ferraz only in Farrell Jewelers and Lakeside Car Wash, and I typically have one bag of garbage a week from each business, sometimes two, but, you know, I also would appreciate the opportunity to be able to pay the $5.50.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lindsey Vetter. The All Saints Parish asked me to read this memo to the City of Fulton Common Council and the Garbage Committee from the Rector Wardens Investor of the All Saints Fiscal Church. I've not seen this before. Due to the fact that the public hearing in regards to the new garbage ordinance is being held on November 1st, we find we are unable to attend because our church holds services on that evening to celebrate All Saints Day. However, we do want you to know that we are very concerned about the situation and would like to propose a change in the categorization and fees for our church. As a nonprofit organization and because we generally only use one or two bags of trash each week, we'd like to be charged in the same way as residential premises. This would entail having our trash picked up and charged on our water bill instead of having to go and purchase the orange garbage stickers. We appreciate your consideration of this matter and look forward to hearing your decision regarding the situation. Anyone else? Anybody on the council? Clear the meeting closed.
Where's the public and members of the council and all tenants have had an opportunity to express their views regarding this matter? Be it resolved the proposal to allow small businesses, commercial properties, on a voluntary basis, to be charged $5.50 per month for garbage and recyclable collection, with the understanding that there is a five-bag limit per week, including recyclables, is hereby approved.
I'll move it.
Second.
Call her off.
Alderman Lincoln.
Yes.
Alderman Teramigi.
Yes.
Alderman Weston.
Yes.
Alderman Cavallaro.
Yes.
Alderman Trowbridge.
Yes.
Alderman Allen.
Yes.
Motion is carried.
I'm going to read the next resolution.
Hold it. It's a meeting the council held on October 18th. The city clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for public hearing to be held at this meeting of November 1st. The Common Council Chambers of the Municipal Building, relative to a proposed local law to authorize the mayor of the city of Fulton to execute the appropriate application to the state of New York for establishment of the Fulton Economic Development Zone within the town of Valney in the city of Fulton. The mayor now declares the hearing open.
Before we listen to comments on this, I think Mr. Maravito has something he wants to discuss.
We have asked a court reporter to be here to transcribe the minutes of this public hearing, so when you do speak, we would ask that you come forward to the microphone, state your name and your address, and then speak. Obviously, with the court reporter, we can't have more than one person talking at any one's time. And also, the minutes that are transcribed will be available in the city clerk's office under the Freedom of Information Act for anybody who wants to require one, probably in another week or so.
The hearing's now open.
Harley Thompson, 709 Seward. I would strongly urge the council to allow Valney to participate in the EDZ for two very basic reasons. The property that used to be Miller Brewing currently has nobody working there, and if there is any type of business looking to acquire the building from Philip Morris, if that building is in the EDZ, it's going to be a lot easier to get somebody to buy it and a lot easier to put people back to work. We've got a lot of clients who used to work at Miller, but the key word is "used" to, and the main concern is just to put these people back to work. The second main reason is Reynolds Metals found out very quickly it's a lot cheaper to send cans next door than it is to send them across the country. They need a break to help them save the jobs that are here. We couldn't recreate right now jobs at Miller Brewing, but it's going to be work to save the jobs that are at Reynolds, and by allowing that parcel to be included in the EDZ, it gives you the opportunity to save those jobs. There's a lot of talk that this council is trying to hold EDZ over Valney's head in exchange for annexation. I'll remind you that anything has anything to do with the other. EDZ might hurt your focus for annexation, but it's not going to kill it if your main thrust is fire, police, and ambulance. Let the court decide that. The main idea here is to save the jobs that are at Reynolds and recreate jobs at Miller Brewing. I also strongly urge you to vote for this tonight and accept them tonight, because if there is a deal on the table somewhere that nobody knows about, we don't want to hold it up waiting for the city to decide if they're going to allow it or not. If there's somebody talking about it and it is accepted tonight, you do accept Valney. They can continue with those negotiations tomorrow, not two, four, six, eight weeks from now when you decide what you're going to do.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. I'm Ann Mira Beto Snyder, and I'm president of the Greater Fulton Chamber of Commerce. We represent some 375 businesses in the Greater Fulton, Valney, and Granby area. Can I give you something? Okay, good.
Can you get it, Mr. Cavallaro?
The Greater Fulton Chamber of Commerce strongly encourages the city of Fulton to adopt the proposal to expand the Fulton Economic Development Zone to include portions of Valney. The EDZ is the single most powerful economic development tool in our arsenal. We need that tool to retain Reynolds, to secure a buyer for Miller Brewing Company, and to assist other Valney-based plants in future expansion. A strong economy in Valney benefits Fulton, too. Both municipalities benefit from the additional taxes, from the employment, from the school taxes, from the county taxes, from the retail business support. EDZ benefits are critical to retaining the Reynolds Metals Company. It's estimated that the EDZ will generate $600,000 in utility savings for Reynolds each year, and this cost savings is especially important because as a result of the Miller Brewing Company closure, Reynolds faces increased business costs of $1.25 million in additional transportation expenses now that they no longer have a customer next door, and that's enough to drive it out of the area. The EDZ will also help a potential Miller Brewing Company buyer save some $5 million a year in utility costs. EDZ benefits help level the playing field between New York State and other northeastern states, states like Pennsylvania and Ohio. There's no guarantee that the EDZ is going to lead to a buyer for Miller Brewing Company, but without the EDZ, we can be sure that our efforts are doomed. We applaud the city of Fulton's vision and leadership in securing the Economic Development Zone designation for the area. We strongly encourage you to maintain that vision and to expand the EDZ into Valney. And then separately, and I thank you for that, separately, I've had a discussion with a gentleman named Mr. Jeffrey Emhoff, and I have a statement that I would like to share with you. I think that you'll find his comments to be very relevant. Jeffrey Emhoff...
Excuse me, I was going to say, who is Jeffrey Emhoff?
Jeffrey Emhoff is a vice president with Robert L. Hood Company. Robert L. Hood Company is one of the three marketing firms that have been retained by Miller Brewing Company to sell the Miller plant. The three firms are Robert L. Hood, which is a Syracuse-based firm. They're handling the local contacts to sell Miller, so they're the people who are offering the plant tours, and they're handling the local administration. They're also out looking for leads. The other firms that are involved in marketing Miller are Cushman &amp; Wakefield, which is based out of New York City and Connecticut area, and they're handling finding national contacts. And then there's an international company also called Ely. But Robert L. Hood is the group that sees people that are coming into our Miller Brewing Company plant every single day. Mr. Hood learned about tonight's public hearing last Friday, and unfortunately, he was unable to come tonight, but he did forward this statement and asked that we would read it to you if possible. He starts by saying that he regrets that he's unable to be here tonight. His statement is, "The economic development zone benefits are the kind of fundamental, structural, economic incentives that are critical to the process of attracting quality manufacturing companies to this area. Most manufacturers have more than one choice when searching for manufacturing facilities. They often consider several different areas in a geographic region. To be able to offer the utility reductions, wage tax credits, and property tax programs contained in an economic incentive program which is found in an EDZ is a very important part of the economic development process. Strong consideration should be given to the approval of the economic development zone for the areas under consideration. The people of Fulton know the value of having quality manufacturing companies located in the area to give the great workers of the city a good place to earn a living. Thank you, and sign Jeffrey L. Emhoff, Vice President, Robert L. Hood."
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else like to talk about the EDZ?
Mayor, members of the common council, I'm Mike Treadwell. I'm director of Operation Swigill County, the county's economic development agency. I reside at 1101 Main Street in Phoenix, New York. Just a few statements, not to be redundant in what Ann just mentioned with the chamber, but the reason we got involved in the Economic Development Zone program was for the sole purpose of trying to create an atmosphere to enable jobs to be created and jobs to be retained in this area. Basically, what is being proposed and is on the table tonight is the original intent of the EDZ, the original program that we had wanted to put forth to the state of New York in cooperation with the city and the town, is basically what's on the drawing boards tonight and what we are urging the common council to vote in a positive nature in terms of allowing the additional properties within the city and the additional properties within the town of Valney that's being proposed to be added to the zone. There's no question, there's a number of things that are in the works right now from the standpoint of securing some state funds to develop marketing initiatives to try to market the Miller Brewing facility. The availability of EDZ benefits have always been on the table in talking with potential prospects for the Miller facility and dealing with the New York State, dealing with firms like Cushman &amp; Wakefield and Robert Hood from the standpoint. Those benefits, we feel, are absolutely necessary, absolutely critical to enable a marketing initiative to be successful in terms of attracting a major investor to come in and take over that facility, and likewise, from the standpoint of retaining one of our best and strongest industries in this area, Reynolds Metals, and keeping them competitive in this rural market. And there's no question at this point in time that timing is of the essence. Every day that goes by in which we don't take the positive step forward in terms of getting the zone designation and being able to, without a doubt, make those benefits available to a prospect, then we are dealing with some unknowns, which can be a deterrent in terms of getting the commitment from companies to come in and acquire that facility. So, I think it behooves us right now to not delay, to move forward, and to modify the zone boundaries whereby we can market the Miller facility, assist the Reynolds facility. Plus, there's some issues now involving the Quality Inn, of which zone benefits would be made available, too, with the addition, so there's some direct benefits there as well. But the key thing is, we're trying to develop with a zone program, we're trying to develop an atmosphere, a business climate that is conducive to attracting new employers to this area, and that program is one in which certain economic development incentives are readily made available to do that. But likewise, as important as anything in terms of attracting employers to an area is also a spirit of cooperation in terms of communities, agencies, state, all working together for the same purpose, and that purpose is to develop jobs, create jobs, and to attract investment and help make this area, this city, this community, the adjoining towns in this county, in this state, a good place to conduct business and to do business. And the initiative to move ahead with the zone program certainly would be a step in that way in terms of expanding it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Tredwell, can I ask you a question? You mentioned Quality Inn. That's going to be included in this EDZ?
Yes. Yes, the addition in the zone includes the property which the Quality Inn is located in.
Some of the proposal included changing some of the zone boundaries in the city.
Right. Correct.
I didn't know that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mic's just a little shorter than I meant. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is David Turner. I'm president of Swigill County Labor Council. I reside at 111 South Forest Street in the city of Fulton. I came before you earlier this year where I sought and received your support for our efforts to include the town of Valney into the Economic Development Zone. Since then, the zone has been designated. Since then, the town of Valney has requested to be included into the zone. On behalf of the working people in the county, those who are currently employed in the industries that might be included, should you approve Valney's request, those who are unemployed and have an intense desire to be re-employed by any one of the number of different industries who have expressed an interest in occupying the currently vacant Miller Brewing Company, I strongly urge you to approve the request by the town of Valney to be included in that zone. This isn't the time to hold hostage the livelihoods of those families. This isn't the time to play politics with the livelihoods of those families. This is the time to do the right thing. This is the time to approve that request. Tonight's the night to do it. Let's put some people back to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mayor Buller, my name is Ed Martin, and I'm the plant manager to Fulton Can Plant, and I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the employees of this particular plant. We encourage you to add Valney to the EDZ zone. The reasons for this is, for Reynolds Metals Company, as you know, we've lost our base customer, and we need to be competitive. One of the ways we can be competitive is through utilities, and through the EDZ rate, we can gain substantial benefits. So, again, we encourage you to please vote to add Valney to the EDZ zone. Thank you.
Mr. Martin, I have a couple of questions I'd like to ask you, if I might. We've met in the past, and, pardon me, one of the questions that I asked you and you answered me, but I'd like the people here this evening to hear this, is that based on the current economic conditions in your industry, based on economic conditions in the foreseeable future remaining comparatively stable, what are the long-term prospects of Reynolds in Swigill County? Given the EDZ.
Given the EDZ. The way I would answer that, Mr. Mayor, is our intention is to be in the community for a long, long time. We'd be competitive. We have a great opportunity to do that. Obviously, I can't stand and give you any guarantees to say we'll be here five years or ten years. The only thing I can say to you is, we are in competition, not only with our sister plants, but other companies as well, and we have to be competitive. So, we have to do everything we can, and the EDZ will allow us to be a part of that competitiveness. So, I can't give you any long-term...
I understand, but this is not a short-term fix you're asking for. This is, in your perspective, it's a long...
in the foreseeable future remaining comparatively stable, what are the long-term prospects of Reynolds in Oswego County? Given the EDC?
Given the EDC. The way I would answer that, Mr. Mayor, is our intention is to be in the community for a long, long time. We'd be competitive, we have a great opportunity to do that. Obviously, I can't stand and give you any guarantees to say we'll be here five years or ten years. The only thing I can say to you is, we are in competition, not only with our sister plants, but other companies as well, and we have to be competitive. So we have to do everything we can, and the EDC will allow us to be a part of that competitiveness. So I can't give you any long-term...
I understand, but this is not a short-term fix you're asking for. This is, in your perspective, it's a long-term perspective to remain in this community, in and part of this community.
I wouldn't be standing here tonight if I didn't have any intentions personally for the Fulton Can Plant to be in this area as long as we would like to be here. That's the thing that I tell my people, our future's in our hands, and we like to be in this area as long as we want to be here. But again, you have to understand, there are no guarantees that a business can give you that they will stay in an area a certain period of time.
I understand. The next question is, does the EDC give you the tools you need to be competitive?
It definitely adds to it. It definitely helps. It gives us a lot of advantages that we don't currently have. Utilities is a very high cost for us, and to be able to lower that definitely puts us in a competitive market.
Thank you.
Anyone from the council have any questions for Mr. Martin? Anyone else to talk about the EDC?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Frank Corelli, Business Representative for the International Association of Machinists and Aerospace Workers. I represented the employees at Miller Brewing Company until September 30th of this year. It was very painful for me to watch those people leave that plant on the 28th and 30th of that day. That was my family. I would like nothing more than to have someone come along to give us an offer so that we can put some of those people, many of them in this room tonight, back to work. The EDC will help us get there. Along with that, in following up with what Mr. Martin said, I also represent the employees at Reynolds Metals. Earlier this year, we opened up our contract six months prior to what it was supposed to be opened up, with the approval of the membership of the union. At that time, the membership approved giving up over $3.20 an hour to help Reynolds with the additional costs that were placed on us based on the brewery closing. That EDC means a lot to that plant, it means a lot to the 110 people I have working there, that two, a family of mine. Please do the right thing, approve the EDC, help us continue to do business at that site as well as find a buyer for the brewery. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, my name is Tim Phillips. I'm President, I was President, of that union that represented those members. I moved to the County of Oswego in 1978 from Western New York where we lost companies because we couldn't get government and labor and management to work together. We've got an opportunity now, you have an EDC that is right there. We had 1,500 members in 1979, and now we have zero as of September 30th. You have an opportunity here tonight to at least open the door for a potential buyer to come forward and purchase that facility and put folks back to work. I lived in the City of Fulton, I live now in the town of Granby. I don't live in the City of Fulton, I moved out eight years ago, but I lived in the City of Fulton for 10 years. It's a great city. There's a great opportunity here for the City of Fulton, the town of Valney, whatever's going on politically, we've got to put that aside. You've got an opportunity here tonight to act on this, approve that EDC, and let us go forward and try to get an employer. So I urge you tonight to please vote for the EDC.
Any other people to speak on the EDC? Anyone from the council?
I have come. I see no substantive reason set forth here tonight not to be in favor of the inclusion of the town of Valney into the Economic Development Zone. My vote to hold this public hearing is based in my belief that the people have the right to speak. EDC stands for Growth and Expansion of Business in Our Immediate Community, which includes the towns of Valney and Granby, and it represents a competitive vehicle for existing industry. For all its wrongs, EDC does translate into jobs and job security for our city residents and townspeople alike. Our region needs that stabilization of jobs and insurance of jobs, which EDC can provide. EDC does not belong to the City of Fulton as such, it is a grant from the state legislature based upon need. The largest need by which Fulton demonstrated in our application to the state had to do with the inclusion of the town of Valney and the Reynolds Aluminum and Miller Brewery properties in particular. Those properties were so vital, we continued to include them in the application even when the Town Board rejected EDC based on their lack of vital information. If EDC was good then, with the inclusion of Valney property, why wouldn't it be good tonight? As to the question of EDC becoming a bargaining chip whereby we would twist the collective arms of the Valney Town Board, forcing them to hand over annexation of the River Glen Mall in exchange of EDC, I say this ploy is flat-out wrong. It is wrong morally and ethically and injurious to the goodwill relation we have shared with the towns of Granby and Valney for 92 years. I have never considered this approach personally. Others on this council have their own opinions, and may their good conscience help them to respond. Last week, a Valney Town official alerted this council that Valney could or would pursue a fraud investigation should Fulton deny Valney's request for EDC inclusion. I understand their concerns, but I don't necessarily agree with that approach. Threats and counter-threats have no place here when an issue of this magnitude is on the table. We all need to set aside our political posturing and vote in the interest of honesty and fair play and put the people back to work. Thank you.
Anybody else in the council?
I'd like to respond to that. I think that's a pretty strong statement without some basis behind it. Certainly, there's a lot of rumors out there, a lot of observations of what we were going to do or what we weren't going to do, but I assure you that this council is not going to back off from their commitment, their responsibility for the betterment of the whole community. We've all had a lot to think about, about a lot of different items. This is certainly one of them. And I appreciate all the comments we've had tonight. We anticipate that we're going to get more comments. I had a letter this afternoon that I got. I've had people say that they're going to respond at a later date, so I think that the question is one that the council, well, myself, would still need a little time for. And not to avoid the issue for any particular reason, this is a public hearing tonight, we're here to hear what everybody has to say, and we've heard some positive comments. I know one of the aldermen intends to solicit the word, talk to his people, see what they think. At a public hearing, you don't always get all the comments. There's still people that need to be heard.
Well, if nobody wants to respond, I would respond to that by saying, the intent of the public hearing is for people to come forward and express their opinion here and now. Can they not be here? They should then, at that point, contact their alderman and express their wishes then. This is the forum for people to respond, as I said, with their opinion. As we conclude this public hearing, if there are no further comments, I would move that the clerk read the resolution that was prepared and that the council vote on this here and now tonight. We have heard that, several people had mentioned that we need to get this done tonight and move forward. There is no reason not to vote EDC at this point. And one other comment, it was mentioned earlier that we never vote after a public hearing. I conducted some research, there's been 19 public hearings to date. One was not voted upon on the recommendation of the city attorney, and the other was not voted upon because of some revisions. Seventeen public hearings were followed at its conclusion with a vote. Therefore, we have had our public hearing, and I suggest that we should vote here and now.
I think that, I know earlier in the year, we had a public hearing and we took a vote which, we made decisions and afterthoughts, we felt that we should have had more input. And from that point on, we have, at different times, said that we would reserve our decisions to making sure that we had enough information. Now, I will say at this time, if the council feels that they want to vote on this tonight, I think that's open.
Will a counter to that be? If the council doesn't feel they want to vote on this tonight, can I hear a reason as to why not?
Excuse me, Mr. Turner, would you like to speak?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I understand I have the opportunity to speak twice on this issue. I'd like to echo Alderman Turmidge's comments. This public hearing was publicized in the official local papers as per your local laws. Those who had a desire to speak on this issue have had significant time to bring their comments forward, either verbally tonight or in written form to the members of the council, and I would like to support his recommendation that we do act on this tonight. There has been time for public comment, I don't think we need to look at this any farther. There's jobs that are hanging on the edge of your decision tonight.
Thank you. I would ask my fellow aldermen to comment individually.
If I may then, Mr. Mayor, given what I've heard here tonight, and I appreciate the comments of Alderman Turmidge and President of the Council, Bob Weston, I believe we must act. I think we have heard sufficient comment here tonight, and I for one would like to take a vote now. I'll second the motion.
Please read the resolution. Did you offer that, Mr. Turmidge?
I said I would, but I will now, yes.
You gotta read the resolution first.
You have to read it.
Whereas a public member of the council and all in attendance have had an opportunity to express their views regarding said proposed local law, whereas the City of Fulton Common Council hereby finds it appropriate that an Economic Development Zone be established in portions of the City of Fulton and the town of Valney. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Fulton adopts said local law authorizing the Mayor of the City of Fulton to make application to the state of New York for the establishment of said Economic Development Zone as set forth in Exhibit A attached here too.
If you approve, then the local law that was passed earlier this year, which was Local Law Number Three, will have to be rescinded, okay? To rescind a local law, you have to have a public hearing, so then, if you approve this, then the next resolution will be to have a public hearing at the next meeting to rescind Local Law Number Three. That would mean what you adopted tonight would be valid, because the next local law would just be a purely ministerial act, okay? Just so everybody's clear on that.
So would be valid tonight?
It would, well...
Would be.
A local law is valid when it's filed with the Department of State, which is something the city clerk would do.
Mr. Turmidge?
Okay.
Tell him over there.
What was that local law you want to rescind?
Phil Blair, 302 Pratt Street. Mr. Mayor, could you tell me or read that local law you want to rescind?
Well, the local law that we would be rescinding would be the local law that was adopted earlier this year on February 28th, which approved the original EDC, which did not include the town of Valney. That would have to be obviously rescinded, you can't have...
Okay, shouldn't you rescind that first? Can't you rescind that?
Well, that's not what's on the table tonight, and if it's the council's pleasure to vote on the second local law tonight, they can do that.
It's like putting a cart before a horse again, isn't it?
Well, we're accused of that a lot.
Well, I'm all for including Valney. I'm not saying that, I'm just saying I don't want, I don't want to see any reason for this to get screwed up. I mean, if we're going to vote on it and include Valney, which is great, but I don't want to see any reason for somebody coming back next week and saying, well, you can't do that, all right?
If you rescind the local law, then you're assuming that the second one's going to be adapted, and you don't know that.
Checky Ivy with Reynolds Metals Company from Richmond, Virginia. I would just like to address one issue, and that is that this is a matter of urgency for a couple of reasons. One is that one of the provisions of the Economic Development Zone requires that in order for us to get the benefits that we need, would require us to be carried in a new customer status. We've been told, and I've got a letter here to this effect, that if this should go over into the next year before it's totally finalized, then we would risk losing all the benefits, if you will, as far as Economic Development Zone is concerned. So it's, from our standpoint, it's absolutely imperative that this be acted on as quickly as it possibly can. The second thing I'd like to comment on is the need for this EDC designation. The industry that we're in is a very competitive industry. As a matter of fact, there have been about nine typical, if you will, plants similar to ours that have been closed within the last couple of years, and it was just an announcement two weeks ago that the largest manufacturer, if you will, of aluminum cans has closed three more plants by the end of the first quarter, so it's a very competitive industry. We at Reynolds have been assuming for a long time that the Economic Development Zone would be approved for Fulton. I can tell you myself, we have 18 plants coast to coast. I've spent more time in Fulton, New York, this past year, working on trying to make this plant as economically viable as we possibly can than I have in all the other plants put together, and that's because we're totally committed to this community and to this plant. But the Economic Development Zone benefits are essential, given our customer base left the state, so I would urge you to act with all haste. We're almost a year behind our schedule, and I realize that's not behind your schedule, but behind our schedule, so I would urge you to act as quickly as possible. Thanks. Ivy, Ivy Y.
Sparky Holmes, President Parquet Chrysler, 825 South Forest Street, Fulton. I basically had not decided to stand up and speak because I felt that there was so much eloquence from some of the, you know, people that really know what's happening in the employment industry had already spoken, and therefore, I thought there'd be no problem at all in terms of having it voted on and passed. I commend the council, I commend Councilman Turmidge in saying, let's do it tonight. The only reason that I spoke is because, as I say, sometimes I think we think that this EDC zone maybe is industry welfare. I want you to understand, EDC zone will not affect me in terms of, it is only for new business, which is why Reynolds Metals needs to have it done within that first year. The door of opportunity is here, and literally, it is not welfare for industry, but if we don't start looking at helping industry to keep our jobs, then all of the trickle-down that eventually ends up allowing them to purchase an automobile for me, but in that respect, we have to see the vision that I'm sure Councilman Turmidge saw tonight, that the vote has to be tonight and it has to be accepted. You don't have to travel very far. Three weekends ago, I was down in Charlotte, North Carolina. If you see the building and the... If you see the building and the, um, the economic climate that is there, you understand that why come up and fight so many things, including what we're famous for, even our weather and its expense, when you can go to these places and have the red carpet rolled out for you? I applaud you, and I hope that the vision that you were voted in with will show through.
My name is Ed Crowley, Nine Eighty-One East Broadway, Oswego County Legislature. Uh, there's something that has not brought, been brought out tonight, and I think that it should be. Mike Tredwell serves on the Regional Economic Development Council with me, and at our February or January meeting, when the subject of the EDZ came up, the, uh, five-county group allowed, uh, myself and Bruce Phelps to make a resolution and a second, carried unanimously, to have the EDZ in Fulton and Valney. We included Valney. And we came back with flags waving, and we got it through the council and with, with no opposition. Uh, you must realize that you're talking about, uh, five counties that work together like a, a glove on your hand. I, to this date, I've been on the council for, uh, ten years. I've yet to see any argument over it should be here or it should be there. If it was already, then we had the support of all. Then we found out that, that the Valney Town Board voted against it, and it threw the whole plan, uh, into a cocked hat. Uh, it was embarrassing, and I think Mike will bear it out to go back to the next meeting and tell them that, uh, the resolution we made wasn't, uh, really hold because, uh, Valney, uh, did not want to go into it. This meeting shouldn't even be, because it could have been, when we passed that resolution, uh, the involvement and, and the cooperation of Valney was a must. There's nobody sits in this room that, that's been more, uh, aggressive when it comes to, uh, the creation of jobs than I have in the twenty-one years I've been in the legislature. And, uh, uh, it, it, it just was, uh, a, a punch right square on the chin, uh, when, when, uh, Valney, uh, failed to, to listen to us, the importance to support Reynolds. Uh, we, we tried to get that message across, the importance that, uh, that we'd be able to, uh, uh, support a, a buyer for, for Miller. Uh, I understand we had a couple that were fairly hot, but, uh, the EDZ zone was not there, and it cooled off. I don't know whether it's fact or fiction, but I tend, tend to think that there is some measure of fact to it. The whole point I'm trying to make is that this meeting shouldn't even take place tonight. There's no reason for it. Uh, it should have been done a long, long time ago, when guys like me that sit on the Economic Development, uh, Committee out of the central New York region, uh, told people we must protect these hundred and forty-five jobs at Russell's, at Reynolds at all cost. And, uh, the failure was not on our part, believe me. Uh, we were right up front, and the failure was communication or whatever you want to call it. But let's vote on it. Let's, let's not monkey around with it, and let's, let's get this thing going and protect these guys that are, that are here from, uh, Reynolds and give them an opportunity to be competitive. Uh, that's what we can do for them, and I think we ought to do it right now. Thank you.
Um, may I comment? Um, I'd like to make a comment. Um, there's a lot of mixed feelings in this community about the town of Valney. A lot of very negative, uh, a lot that you pick up the paper every day. You hear a little lot of cruel things about the City of Fulton, um, that we're short-sighted, that we don't see anything. We're all from the beginning, all we wanted to help people get their jobs. And a lot of our, a lot of councilmen, including myself, are out of breakfast out around the town, and we say, don't do it for them, for Valney. I would like to bring this for a vote tonight, and I will do it for the right reasons, and that will be the reason why I will vote tonight.
I would echo those same sentiments, and I would also like to introduce into the minutes of this meeting, a letter that was, uh, sent to Mr. Ivy from, uh, Edward Keeney Jr., Director of Economic Development, that I'd like to jostice over, if he would.
I'd just say some comments that were heard. Are you done? I'm sorry, Jim.
I'd like for him to read that.
Okay.
The letter was dated June second, nineteen ninety-four, to Mr. Jackie, SIV Operations Manager, Can Division, Reynolds Metals. Dear Jackie, I was utterly shocked by the recent decision by the town of Valney officials not to be included part of the town in a joint application with the City of Fulton to receive designation from New York State as an economic development zone. As Director of Economic Development for Niagara Mohawk, I can unequivocally state that the most effective economic development program within New York for the attraction of industry and assistance to existing companies in their expansion efforts is the EDZ. The most quantitative incentive and the plethora of subsidies offered at the state and local level to businesses in the EDZ are the discounts provided by the utilities and the reduction of energy's cost of their electric and natural gas rates. Niagara Mohawk customers, who are the beneficiaries of our economic development zone rider, are realizing savings ranging from fifty to seventy percent of our full tariff rate. For a customer with the electric load characteristics of Reynolds, this would equate to a kilowatt-hour price of approximately point zero four. Jackie, as I have indicated to you before, Niagara Mohawk would extend our EDZR to Reynolds on your entire load if Reynolds is able to be certified within the nineteen ninety-four calendar year. It is imperative that Reynolds, Reynolds be certified prior to establishing itself as a customer of record with Niagara Mohawk for twelve months. As you recall, the first electric bill was rendered to Reynolds in January nineteen ninety-four. Until the twelve months elapses, we consider a customer, a new customer of record. And in the case of EDZR, that would entitle the company to receive our EDZR on a hundred percent of its account. I encourage you to continue to fight for the zone designation for the Fulton facility and wish you luck in this endeavor. Sincerely, Edward J. Kearney, Junior Director, Economic Development.
I'd like to put this into the record.
I just want to add that comments-
Jeff, Jeff.
What?
He's got a ticket.
Sorry. I guess I don't. Sorry. I just feel comments focusing on the government of the town of Valney are counterproductive at this time. We need to move forward and face what we have to face. And with that, I move the call, the last question, that is, vote on the motion on the table.
I'll second.
Everyone is done speaking.
I hadn't closed the hearing yet.
Ron Patrick, Tannery Lane, Fulton, New York. Yeah, when I first read in the paper that the town of Valney voted to let Miller Brewery and Reynolds into the EDZ if the council saw fit to it, I was elated. I thought, finally, they've seen the light. That, I just felt it was a done deal, and I seem to be getting the impression tonight, listening, that it's not a done deal. And I hope I have a wrong impression, because I think it would be the dumbest thing in the world to not keep jobs and help create new jobs, no matter where they are. It's bound to affect and help everyone in the whole county. Please take into that consideration. The only thing we want is the EDZ and to retain jobs and have new jobs.
Anyone else that wants to speak on the EDZ?
Tim Phillips, I've just got one last comment. I was President of the Union, you're leading the city, I led the membership, and I did what the membership wanted, and I spoke for the membership. You represent the entire city, but the bottom line comes down to industry and jobs. Without industry and without jobs, all these chairs will be vacant. We've got to have industry, and we've got to have jobs, and I just want to one more time reiterate how important this EDZ is, how important it is to vote on it tonight, how important it is to vote on it and pass it tonight. We all need it. It's the future of us and our children. Again, as I said, I raised my children in this city. My children will live in this city. It's a great city. We're headed in the right direction. Let's let it be the city of a future. That's what we've got to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make one last comment, and this is for Mr. Weston. It was, we did talk about this. Mr. Weston was expressing the feelings of the council. I don't want to hang you out, um, Bob. We did, we have been trying to solicit, um, throughout our wards, um, talking to people in general, how they feel about that, and, and I haven't received a, a phone call about the CDZ zone. But, uh, I think that we've heard the people are here tonight. I think it's opened up, and I think, um, we should vote how we feel and, um, put aside some of the other stuff.
Clear the hearing closed. Please call the roll. Alderman Lincoln?
Yes.
Alderman Tirmidji?
Yes.
Alderman Weston?
Before I vote, I'd like to say a couple more things. Uh, first of all, I was tremendously surprised, too, when Valney, uh, voted first yes for the EDZ and then no. Uh, it certainly, uh, seemed to feel like it, it just wasn't the right thing to do. Um, I know that, uh, with everyone that's here tonight, with industry here, and all the labor councils and the union people, and all the benefits that an EDZ zone will mean to the whole community, and I think it's time we have to start stopping to think about Valney, Granby, and Fulton, and start thinking about the whole community. If we don't start working together on a lot of different things, sharing services, sharing equipment, sharing our ideas, it's gonna be a very lonely trip. So with saying that, and with all the, uh, emphasis on the development of EDZ zone, and I know, too, that at different times, uh, it has been expressed that, uh, you're taking money from one place, and, um, I know that was one of the things that was mentioned earlier, uh, in the town of Valney, but I think if the monies are available, we better make ourselves available to them. And thus with saying all of those things, I vote yes.
Alderman Cavallaro?
Yes.
Alderman Trowbury?
Yes.
Alderman Allen?
Yes.
Motion is carried, Your Honor.
And, uh, we hope everyone prospers, too, with this.
Council want to call a five-minute recess? Want to continue?
Yes.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I can.
You're good. Do you want to move a five-minute recess?
Yes, I'll move it.
Second, second.
If this proposal right here could do the trick, it, it could suffice your, your economic goal, and ours, too.
Were they reading?
Just looks like a double meeting.
Resolve that city clerk be authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held on December sixth, nineteen ninety-four, at seven P.M. in the council chambers in the municipal building, relative to rescinding Local Law Number Three of nineteen ninety-four, which was adopted on February twenty-eighth, nineteen ninety-four.
Who do you want to offer that?
I'll second it.
And the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Excuse me? No, you have to have a public hearing to rescind it.
Notation, in the meeting of the council held on October fourth, the city clerk was authorized to receive bids in his office in municipal building, entered before October thirty-first up to four P.M. to be publicly open at four fifteen in the council chambers for curb replacement sidewalk ramps on Utica and South Forest Street. The bids that were received were open and read aloud. James Ross and Son Construction, fifty-seven thousand six hundred and twenty-one dollars. Carmen Vecchio Inc., seventy-seven thousand sixty-two dollars. These bids were referred to the City Engineering Department for review, and the recommendation will be returned to the council at a future meeting. Notation, a meeting held on October fourth, city clerk also was authorized to advertise received bids up to four P.M. on October thirty-first for the construction of Topath Tail Trail Phase One. The bids were open and read aloud as follows. Weekly hauling, thirty-four thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. Gasparini Landscaping, forty-three thousand five hundred and ninety dollars. Expert Landscaping, forty-two thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Lee Construction, thirty-five thousand nine hundred dollars. Madison Construction, thirty-five thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars. James Ross and Son, sixty-nine thousand three hundred and twenty-six dollars. Carmen Vecchio Inc., forty-eight thousand dollars. Warlock Paving, forty-four thousand ten dollars. These bids were hereby referred to Cotts and Associates for their review and recommendation to be returned to the common council at a future meeting. Notation, that the appointment by Mayor Bullard of Catherine Mahalik, Five Oh Seven West Forest Street, Fulton, New York, as Secretary to the Plumbing Board to fill the unexpired term of Jeanette Peacock effective October one, nineteen ninety-four, until expired December thirty-first, nineteen ninety-five, is entered in the minutes of this council meeting of November one, is man of the record. Resolve that Chapter One Sixty-Five, the Vehicle and Traffic Ordinance, City of Fulton, New York, be amended, read as follows. Section One Sixty-Five Fifty-Two, entitled Stop Intersections, add stop sign on East Eighth Street, direction north at the intersection of Emory Street. Add a stop sign in Fairgrave School parking lot exit westerly to South Seventh Street. Delete Section One Sixty-Five Fourteen, restricted access areas. Delete C, all vehicular traffic other than bus traffic prohibited for entering the cul-de-sac on west side of Fairgrave School on Monday through Friday, eight thirty, eight thirty A.M. to nine A.M., twelve thirty P.M. to one P.M., and three P.M. to four P.M. Section One Sixty-Five Fifty-Eight, entitled Parking Prohibited At All Times, add South Seventh Street, both sides Buffalo to Academy. Adds on One Sixty-Five Dash Sixty-One, parking prohibited certain hours. Academy Street, both sides, eight A.M. to four P.M., Monday through Friday, from South Seventh Street and in easterly direction to Fairgrave School property line. Add East Eighth Street, both sides, eight A.M. to four P.M., Monday through Friday, from Emory, in a southerly direction to the Fairgrave School property line.
Someone want to offer that?
Um, I'd like to, and I'd like to take the time to thank Lieutenant Rebiore, Lieutenant Aiello, uh, DPW Commissioner, and, uh, there's a lot of effort put into this, the study of the school and the safety of the children. We had a couple of meetings. School worked very cooperatively, and I, I think our department heads did a wonderful job in assisting them, and, uh, out of this, I think Fairgrave School is safer for the kids, and, um, I just want to express my thanks.
Thank you. Somebody want to second that? Mr. Allen? Please call the roll. Alderman Lincoln?
Yes.
Alderman Tirmidji?
Yes.
Alderman Weston?
Yes.
Alderman Cavallaro?
Yes.
Alderman Trowbury?
Yes.
Alderman Allen?
Yes.
Motion is carried, Your Honor.
Resolve that Chapter One Sixty-Five, Vehicle and Traffic Ordinance, City of Fulton, New York, be amended, read as follows. One Sixty-Five Fifty-Eight, Parking Prohibited At All Times, delete Academy Street South on the south side from South Second for fifty-six feet westerly. Delete Section One Sixty-Five Dash Sixty-One, Schedule Seventeen, Parking Prohibited Except For Certain Hours. Delete Academy Street on the south side, all except eight A.M. to one P.M. Sunday, from South First Street easterly for sixty-six feet. Add Academy Street, south side, all except eight A.M. to one P.M. Sunday, between South First Street and South Second Street.
I'd, I'd like to move that, and, and also, um, uh, this was brought to my attention, the safety, um, by a couple of my constituents, and Lieutenant Rebiore did a traffic study and decided it was in the best interest of the public safety to, uh, pass this resolution as it stands. So, um, again, I thank you, and move it.
I'll second it.
Motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Resolve that propose amendments to Chapter Sixty-One of the city code entitled Electrical Standards, which have been approved by the electrical board, per letter from the city attorney dated October tenth, nineteen ninety-four, are hereby approved. Mr. Vaughn?
Um, this legislation basically covers the following items, uh, that all electric wiring, uh, done in the city, uh, would require permit and, uh, done by a licensed- the city would require permit and done by a licensed electrician. In the case of the owner-occupied home, the homeowner may do his own wiring but must obtain a permit and have it inspected. Any licensee in any mechanical trade within the city of Fulton is able to pick up a subsequent license after he's proved disability through a test, with the fee being fifty percent of such charges for such trades. The next is a proposed increase in the fees for licensing from one hundred dollars to a hundred and fifty dollars. And the last covers that the license must be filed with the clerk's office on or before December 1st.
Somebody want to move that? Move it. Mr. Weston?
Second?
Second.
Alderman Lincoln? Yes.
Alderman Teramidji?
Sorry, I'm a little remiss here. I had hoped that items 11, well, there's six items there pertaining to code enforcement, it would proper, would go to a public hearing prior to we vote on this. If that not be the case, I would vote no.
Alderman Weston?
Yes.
Alderman Cavallaro?
Yes.
Alderman Trowbridge?
Yes.
Alderman Allen?
Yes.
Motion is carried, Your Honor. Resolved that the proposed amendments to Chapter 8182 of the city code entitled Plumbing Board Rules and Regulations, which have been approved by the plumbing board per the letter from the city attorney dated October 10, 1994, are hereby approved.
The first provision provides that the fee for licensing of master plumbers be raised from fifty dollars a year to a hundred dollars a year. The next provision deals with a special provision which is now granted to the plumbers relevant to contracts over a hundred thousand dollars for a special one-time license. This proposal would grant the same rights to the HVAC contractor. Basically, it covers also that any contractor in heating who also wanted to get a license in plumbing improved disability through a test would also be able to get that license and pay a fifty percent of the normal fee to obtain that license.
The test Mr. Vaughn referred to, is that given by the city, or is that given by the plumbing board and the electrical board, or who administers the test?
The test is both designed and given by the board.
Given and given. Now, which we're still under the board's ruling as far as the testing requirements go?
Absolutely, absolutely. Yes, that's correct.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, House Secretary, 317 South Third, I'm the president of the plumbing and heating board. I just want to ask for verification on a couple of discrepancies. We had a plumbing board meeting, and we agreed on certain things, but they came back slightly changed, and I understand Mr. Vaughn sent some notes over to Mr. Marvito to make some changes. I just want to know if they were made, because I haven't seen the finished copy. One was the heat license testing. That was supposed to be changed from semi-annually to annually.
That was changed, and there was a letter sent to the mayor, the council, members of the plumbing board, yourself included, and the city clerk with that amendment.
So it was changed. And the other, the second testing was supposed to be free, that was changed too, right?
Yeah, the initial test now, the applicant can take two exams for the one.
For the one-fifty. So that divides up to seventy-five, and each one after that is seventy-five, so it's.
Yeah, both of your requests have been changed up.
Okay. Now, the third, the original license, there's a little discrepancy there. I called a couple of board members. During the plumbing board meeting in August, we discussed raising the testing fee to one hundred and fifty dollars from ten bucks. I was opposed to it, but it was raised to that much money. We raised it because the electrical board is one hundred and fifty. I thought it would be nice in this nation if once we brought down the fee and taxes instead of bringing them up. And my question was, why don't we bring the electrical board down to the plumbing board rather than plumbing board up to the electrical? So that stayed where it was. The renewal license is one hundred dollars a year, right, Mr. Vaughn?
That's correct.
But the new licensing was the discrepancy. I think that got confused with the testing for one-fifty. Renewal, new licenses, we didn't agree on or vote on for one-fifty. I got the August meeting minutes. Mr. Nardozzi proposed a hundred and fifty-dollar test being raised from ten dollars, but there's nothing in the minutes on.
Well, that's, I thought you meant a recent.
Excuse me?
I thought you meant a recent. I was weird for that.
Well, that was, I called a couple of board members, and they said we didn't agree on a hundred and fifty dollars for the first license.
Well, first of all, the licensing fee is in another section which is coming up.
Okay. Yeah, well, I just want to verify it and clarify it.
The new fee is a hundred and fifty dollars.
For the new license?
For the, for the new license.
Right.
For original license?
Yes.
Hundred and fifty.
That was, we, you know, we agreed on one hundred on that. I don't know where the one-fifty came from. I think that came from the mistake, the confusion with the testing of one-fifty.
No, the objective was to make both the licensing and the exam the same, and that was the intent.
Can I read the only part of the minutes that addressed that? Fee for taking plumbing test was discussed, electrical fees one hundred and fifty dollars. Plumbing should also be raised to one hundred and fifty dollars. I don't know why. From ten dollars. Mr. Nardozzi moved to set the fee for taking, heating, and licensing exam and plumbing exam raised to a hundred and fifty dollars with one retest free. It was second unanimously approved, motion was passed for testing, but not for the original. I think a hundred and fifty dollars is a lot of money. On a personal note, Mr. Vaughn is, has been here about three months, I think, and he's working hard at what he's doing, but I feel that the contractors in this city are being singled out, plumbing, heating, electrical, remodeling and building. And Mr. Cavallaro said we have to raise the fees, so we'll raise the fees on the contracts. He might have raised five million in Rochester or three million or five million in Syracuse, but this is Fulton. We're a small town, we have a very small budget, we have no money. And the people can't afford to paint their houses or site them because they don't have fifteen hundred dollars or eight thousand dollars, and every winter goes by, the house gets worse. Now, we're going to have a co-director going around telling people, you have to paint your house. Their argument is going to be, I can't because there's too many taxes and fees. So she calls the contractor to paint the house, he raises it two hundred because his fee has been raised two hundred. So now she still can't paint the house. What I'm saying is, let's not take it out just on the small contractor in town. There's got to be other ways that we could cut the budget, lower the overhead. I know in my house, if we need a refrigerator or a television, we get the refrigerator. And if someone is unemployed, we cut the budget, cut back on spending. We don't go out and get a gun, go stick it to a contractor's head, take a couple of hundred dollars away from him. I raised shelving fee from five dollars inactive fee to fifty dollars, and I had plumbers all over me. My contention was, they're working illegally anyway, even with a shelf license, so you might as well be paying for it. And a license is worth fifty bucks whether you use it or not. But when you raise it to a hundred and fifty, and then another hundred for the heating, and I have a lot of contractors angry, and I'm the one that gets the blunt of it. So I, that's my comment, is I really resent the fact that we singled out the contractors for all these fee increases, which they will pass on to the homeowner, and they're going to be paying an extra fee. So I think the only discrepancy we have is with the hundred and fifty-dollar original license. I don't know what we'll do about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. My question would be number one to Mr. Vaughn, is, were the fees too low to start with? And how does that fee compare to other communities?
Well, if you're talking about statewide, we're probably at the very bottom of the list in so far as what our fees were. This fee schedule would bring us up, but still, with the recent proposed legislation, for example, in the city of Syracuse, it's three times the cost of this, so we're not anywhere near the top of the line. We're in about the middle of the road for a city of our size.
Kathy, do you have some?
Yeah, I had some discussion with Bryce Talents and Steve Lund, and much of the time spent is for doing these mandated inspections is borne by the taxpayer in the city. We do on an annual, five inspections per each house, for instance, a house that goes up. Bryce and I went through a scenario today, and it takes about six hours, as I believe, each of them, to go over there and make all their necessary inspections. And when they do that, they spend hours on the job, and they come home, they do the necessary writing and recording and paperwork, and this does take away from the regular code enforcement that we need done in our city. And that is something that we are trying to deal with because we too do not want to do any more hiring to try to keep costs down. So we look at it as the cost of doing business and trying to get a fair share for the talents that people have that we hire in this community. That's why we are looking at these fee schedules, just to cover the cost of doing business.
And when a person builds a building or puts up a house, they come down and get a building permit, which basically covers everything in the design, which basically covers the inspections, as far as inspectors spending six hours a day in a building.
No, not six hours a day, over span of a building, a building, six hours each for a code zone inspector and a plumbing, heating inspector.
Well, it's.
That's over a period of time. That's twelve hours.
Well, usually they come in, usually they come in, look over the foundation.
That's right.
The framing.
That's right.
Okay, that's your building inspector, that's structural. Then you get into your electrical, your plumbing.
That's right.
And your heating and cooling.
Mm-hmm.
Then you have your final inspection, all right? A good inspector can walk into a building, and nine out of ten times, if they spend over twenty-five to thirty-five minutes in a particular building, then he doesn't know what he's doing, or he doesn't know his contractor.
Well, per each inspection?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I mean.
Not during the whole project.
But at the same time, this is all paid for, when you pay for that building permit, that's not a freebie. I don't know if you've ever gone out and purchased a building permit to put up a building. That's not a freebie.
No.
And that's covering that, so don't say.
Not all the costs are covered.
Don't say, oh, sure it is.
Well, that's your opinion, it hasn't been the opinion of our code enforcement department and for the people that work on the job.
You don't have a code enforcement department yet.
Yes, we do. We just voted on it today.
Oh, that's something, we have something just added today?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, that's nice. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Somebody want to offer that resolution? Mr. Allen? Want to second it?
I'll second it.
Alderman Lincoln?
Yes.
Alderman Teramidji?
Again, we have, seem to have multiple choice, approve this or a public hearing. I opt for a public hearing, so my vote would be no.
Alderman Weston?
Yes.
Alderman Cavallaro?
Yes.
Alderman Trowbridge?
Yes.
Alderman Allen?
Yes.
Motion is carried, Your Honor.
Excuse me, Jerry, does this require a public hearing?
No. No, it doesn't require it, no. It's not a local law.
Resolved that the proposed amendment to section 118-1 of the city code entitled Plumbing License Fee per the memo from Chief Code Enforcement Officer Daniel Vaughn is hereby
Well, we got a minute here, I'd like to ask the city attorney then, if it doesn't require a public hearing, why we have two resolutions?
I don't know, I did not, I prepared the legislation, I didn't prepare the resolution. You can vote to have a public hearing if you like, it's not required. Maybe that's why the two were prepared. Because one, one is to have a public hearing, the other one is to adopt the legislation.
Your Honor? Are you voting tonight on the acceptance of this in full, right? All the fees as they are?
They just voted on the forming, yes.
Okay. How are we going to correct the discrepancy in that new license fee of a hundred and fifty when the board thought it was a hundred?
Well, the council's act takes precedence over the board's.
The council expressed what?
The council's action takes precedence over the board's action.
So if they want a hundred and fifty, they'll get it.
That's what they just adopted.
Why do we meet every month?
Excuse me? I didn't hear you.
Why do we meet every month?
You meet for the reasons that stated in the code. You make recommendations.
And we did, but they were in order. So I don't see why I should even be sitting in for these meetings if what we say doesn't count. If it's changed after the gentleman leaves the meeting. So in other words, it's going to be a hundred and fifty dollars because that's what the council thinks.
Mm-hmm.
Or is that what Mr. Vaughn thinks?
Yes, resolved that the proposed amendment to section 118-1 of the city code entitled Plumbing License Fee per the memo from Chief Code Enforcement Officer Daniel Vaughn is hereby approved. Somebody want to offer that?
I'll move it.
Alderman Lincoln?
Yes.
Alderman Teramidji?
Refer to public hearing, no.
Alderman Weston?
Yes.
Alderman Cavallaro?
Yes.
Alderman Trowbridge?
Yes.
Alderman Allen?
Yes.
Motion is carried, Your Honor. Whereas the New York State Uniform Fire Prevention and Building Code requires inspection of elevators, escalators, and similar equipment by an OEI-certified inspector, and whereas National Elevator Inspection Service being an OEI-certified organization and employing certified inspectors has submitted proposals to conduct planned review, onsite construction inspections, acceptance, inspections, tests, and final construction punch list inspections for the construction of new elevators, escalators, and similar equipment within the city of Fulton, New York at a rate of sixty-eight dollars per hour, and whereas permit fees collected for such service will be utilized to pay for such inspections. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor be authorized to enter in a three-year contract with National Elevator Service, Inc., Rochester, New York, as per task proposal. Alderman Lincoln?
Yes.
Alderman Teramidji?
Yes.
Alderman Weston?
Yes.
Alderman Cavallaro?
Yes.
Alderman Trowbridge?
Yes.
Alderman Allen?
Yes.
Motion is carried, Your Honor. Resolved that the proposed adoption of Chapter 54 of the city code entitled Registration of General and Home Improvement Contractors per the recommendation of Chief Code Enforcement Officer Daniel Vaughn is hereby approved. Officer Daniel Vaughn is hereby approved. Somebody wanna offer that? Second.
Can this be explained?
Yeah. Um, there was, there's been several people who've come to me concerned about, uh, home improvement contractors operating in the city, um, without any insurance, and the people in the city being victimized by that. That was one of the reasons why this legislation was adopted. Um, the other reason is that these, these home improvement contractors and some general contractors have been doing work that is require, that requires a license in this city. And so by registering people, number one, they have to submit insurance papers to, to prove that they do have contractor liability insurance, and they are paying for compensation and New York State disability where they're employees, which is required by state law. And also, it gives us an opportunity to address to them that the importance of their registration and that people call and ask if they're registered, um, we can identify that they are in fact registered. If they violate the laws of the city, they will lose that registration, and we will tell people that when they call. Basically, that's what it does.
We did it. One hundred and ten, Mr. Blair.
First off, uh, where are you gonna come up with the money to police this? That's all. Where, where are you gonna come up with the money to police this? You're gonna have somebody out there, uh, driving around the streets, checking on every contractor?
We have a housing code, a code department, yes.
In other words, you're gonna be able to police this, this, uh, legislation?
Yep.
Okay, secondly, what's the penalties gonna be, other than, uh?
There's a provision in the proposed legislation for a fine of two hundred and fifty dollars, uh, or imprisonment for fifteen days, or both. You would also be prevented, obviously, from continuing on the job until you felt proper.
Okay, secondly, uh, do you realize that the additional expense incurred by the homeowners in the city that really can't afford to go out and pay a competitive price as far as painting and roofing, because you have to add this welfare, you have to show, uh, this is, you have to pay social security on your employees? I mean, granted, there's a lot of jobs taken by the neighborhood guy that, that's out of work, that can do a roof or something like that. You're gonna put these people, you're gonna have a lot of rundown housing in the city of Fulton if you implement this. Because people can't afford to have it done by the guy around the corner, let alone go out and hire a, a, a registered contractor who the state is gonna mandate has to pay social security, welfare, disability, and, uh, the insurance that's required to go along with it, because you taking this on top of the, the overall job.
Can I ask you a question?
Certainly.
I've got the ordinance in front of me. The annual fee is twenty-five dollars. Do you think someone that does that work might not be able to afford twenty-five dollars? That's the annual fee.
The, the, the point is, is what you're doing is you're gonna bring a lot of these, uh, weekend warriors, as we call them, they're not gonna do the jobs anymore. You're gonna have four or five major contractors in this town, you're gonna be like your licensed plumbers and your electricians, you're gonna have four or five guys you can turn to, and you're stuck with it. There's no competition.
For twenty-five dollars?
No, no, it, it's not the twenty-five dollars. The twenty-five dollars is not the big thing. The thing is, is you're mandating that that guy that pays twenty-five dollars pays social security, pays welfare, pays disability. He's gonna be registered with the city. He's not gonna be able to conduct business as usual.
No, there's nothing in there about social security or welfare or disability, it's just that he has liability insurance.
That's it.
My...
Liability insurance.
And what if he's hiring somebody?
Well, he has the legal responsibility, if he's hiring somebody, to pay social security.
Ninety percent of the remodeling work and, and, and work done in this city is done by the guy around the corner, or friend of the family, who's getting money under the table to supplement, and, and, uh, let's face it, I've been in the construction business for a long time, and I understand what, what you're going for. But what's happening is you're gonna take, and a lot of people can't afford it.
Thank you.
And you're not gonna be able to afford to police it, because you can't keep up with it.
Mayor, I echo what, uh, Mr. Blair has said, and, um, I've been involved with some construction, and I can tell you now that, uh, the average contractor, I'm not talking like someone like Mr. Patrick that's a large-scale operation, or Mr. Rowley, but the small-time contractor that's going around town and doing siding repair, whatever, they hire two or three guys, they don't have a large crew, and some of these guys, if you don't know it, they're under the table, they work, you know, a couple of weeks, if there's work, and if there's not work, then they don't work, they collect unemployment, I don't, I'm not sure how they make ends meet, maybe they go on public assistance. But, uh, twenty-five dollars isn't much. I don't know how you're going to police it, especially when many jobs in the city of Fulton, people aren't even applying for building permits, they're going in additions, adding, and remodeling. I don't see how you can police it. And you're, you're telling contractors to have minimum liability insurance. Now, you know, if you're gonna have something built, if I'm gonna have someone build, do some, some building, I require, I require it, I ask them, where's your insurance? Some people don't do that. Some people, to cut costs, contractor comes around the corner and says, I can do this roofing for you, I can do siding for you. What is a contractor? What is gonna be the definition of that? You've got a number of people in this town unemployed, who are roofing, siding, they're, um, you know, they're remodeling insides of homes, I don't know how that's gonna be policed. I'm not sure how Mr. Vaughn's gonna be able to police it. I don't question his abilities, but I, I think it's just another fee, uh, that you're gonna impose on, on, on contractors. Thank you.
Thank you.
This has been a long time coming, I think it's a great thing to have, because it protects the homeowners, because if they hire someone, they might tell them they have liability insurance and they don't. If they fall off their roof, the person that's gonna get sued and loose is the homeowner. And this is a, a tremendous asset to the people, if the city passes this, to help ensure that the, the people doing the work are properly insured, and that's the bottom line.
Thank you. Motion and a second?
I'll move it.
I have a motion and a second.
Would you call it all, please? Alderman Lincoln?
Yes.
Alderman Terramigi?
This is the fourth of six items that, in my opinion, should go to, uh, public hearing for the entire general public to know and come here to comment on. Uh, my vote, no.
Alderman Weston?
Yes.
Alderman Cavallaro?
Yes.
Alderman Trowbridge?
Yes.
Alderman Allen?
Yes.
Motion's carried, Your Honor. Resolved that the proposed amendments to chapter one eighty-one of the city of Fulton entitled fees as prepared by the Chief Code Enforcement Officer for his letter from the city, for, for the letter from the city attorney dated October ninth, tenth, nineteen ninety-four are hereby approved. Twice more?
Oh, okay.
Um, this basically, uh, is a change in the building permit fee schedule in the city. Um, it, it, it's broken down into divisions for one and two families, for multiple dwellings, and commercial and industrial properties. They pay different fees depending, and the, the reason for that is, is because there are more inspections involved with each phase as you grow up. Multiple dwellings take more inspections than do commercial. And, um, what we're trying to do is cover our cost of operation, uh, for those inspections, and for our plan review, and for the issuance of certificates. Also, there's a fee, uh, charged for certificate of occupancy, also for certificate of compliance, and inspection. Um, and it's basically, it's divided into two sections, for contracts under five hundred dollars and contracts over five hundred dollars. And, and the reason for that is we're going with a flat fee, uh, on the, on the, uh, the work under five hundred dollars, um, and, and we will be doing all the inspections. We'll actually be losing money on that, but, uh, this gives the homeowner a break for, uh, the little jobs such as, um, the three smoke detectors that they want put in, uh, that type of thing. So we're trying to give them a break on, on that aspect of it. Um, the, the thing basically defines what is construction work, so people will know what needs a permit. And the last addition to this is a special section for special fire safety permits, uh, which is granted under the new code enforcement, uh, section that was passed tonight. And this section here, uh, is for the special permits for fireworks and outdoor burning and welding, and gasoline and service stations, and those type of operations. And they're a one-time annual fee.
I think under New York State Code, you have to be certified to install, uh, smoke detectors and, and alarm systems. I, I, I know there's been a lot of work done in this city, for the city, that has been installed by, uh, a fireman who is not certified, okay? So what I'm saying is that if there's gonna be a fee for the additional inspection, I think the person inspecting should be certified. Thank you.
Mr. Lance? Mr. Mayor, um, when you pay the fee for the, the building permit, you go down to the office downstairs, and you get the building permit, you pay a certain dollar figure for it. Now, Mr. Vaughn has created two new fees, there's gonna be a fee for a certificate of occupancy. He used to be here in this city from, correct me if I'm wrong, that we would just call up and say, the work's done, can you come down and check the, check it out, because I've paid the fee? And if everything was done correctly, the C O was issued for free. Why am I paying a building permit, and then I have to pay something on top of it? How many more fees are going to be created? And that's just for people who do things the right way. They go downstairs, they hire the architect, anything over fifteen hundred square feet, okay? And then they get the building permit and pay for things. So I bet you eighty percent of the people in this city don't even get a building permit, they just have their brother come over and do the work. And now you're just gonna create all these fees and expect everyone to comply. This, this law, this, 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 what you're gonna be voting on, this measure is wrong. You're just creating more fees for people here in the city of Fulton, go throughout the city. Who's painting their house? Who's paying six or seven thousand dollars to side their, the, the outside of their home, or do any work? Because they don't have the money. And you're creating more fees on top of that? Doesn't make sense.
Um, prior to this legislation, uh, our division of code enforcement has been partially funded, um, through the general fund. My opinion is that that is not fair to the general public. My answer to that is if you build something, you should pay for it. No one benefits from it, except for the person who's building it. The certificates are legal documents, which are required by banks, and also required by state law, we have to issue them. They, they are based on inspections. The final inspection generates the certificate of occupancy. It costs us money to both issue those certificates and to do the inspection. I think the fee of twenty-five dollars is more, is cheap enough.
Excuse me, uh, this is directed to Mr. Vaughn. Mr. Vaughn, are you a licensed plumber?
No, I'm not.
Are you a licensed electrician?
No, I'm not.
Are you a licensed heating and cooling?
No, I'm not.
Are you doing inspections?
No, I'm not.
Who's doing the inspections?
My inspectors.
Are they licensed?
No, they're not, and not required to be.
Why not?
Because they're state certified. They have to pass examinations, just like I did for my job.
One is licensed, or they all licensed?
Both are. One man holds two licenses. He holds a certificate in plumbing, and also a civil service test he's passed for that position, and both gentlemen have, hold the New York State certification for code enforcement officers, as do I.
Thank you.
I'd like to say something positive. We're not limited to, uh, four plumbers in town. We have at least six or seven plumbers, and as I stated before, we have a dozen or more plumbers and electricians that are working somewhere, because they can't afford to be in business for themselves. So we're limited in that respect. But I'm deadly against the moonlighters, whether it's roofing, plumbing, heating, electrical, or anything else. That's the reason we instated the heating license, because we've had about five heating fires. Now, there are contractors in this city, some of them big, who will call a moonlighter to save a couple of bucks, and he'll go in there and he'll cut the price by eliminating venting, or a relief valve on a water heater, or whatever the reason, it has to be a business phone. We have an overhead that would call for forty bucks an hour. I don't think there's a plumber in town charging more than thirty, but you can get a moonlighter out there for fifteen bucks, come in and burn your house down. And the worst part of it is, some of these contractors are calling them. And that's the attitude is, we don't wanna call the licensed plumber or electrician, because we gotta pay. The bottom line of our contract is, if we cut these plumber and electrician, it's more profit for us. And I spoke to one individual from each trade, and I was really disgusted and discouraged. Their bottom line was, I'm gonna make a few bucks on this deal, it's okay with me. What happened to pride and trade? What happened to your tradesmen? What happened to the city, the people, the taxpayer? Don't they count? No, as long as I make more money. And it's those same contractors that call the moonlighters. So I like the fact that we're enforcing the code, and I like the fact that we're gonna get these guys registered, so we know what they're doing, and if they're insured, that's great. The fees being shoved down our throat doubled and tripled is the part that I don't like. And I gotta answer the plumbers in this city, and there are more than four of them. So that's a positive note I wanna be, thank you.
Um, let me just give you a concrete example to put it into perspective. If you came into the city and you bought an eighty thousand dollar home, cost of the building permit fee would be four hundred and twenty dollars of that expense. So I think if you are building an eighty thousand dollar home, four hundred and twenty dollars put in perspective for the cost of sending our men back and forth to do this inspection is, is a very just cost. Plus, on top of this, in Anadaga County, I don't know why people and plumbers aren't coming and knocking on the door and screaming in Fulton, because in Anadaga County, it's triple those prices. They are very reasonable. And, and to give a license for ten dollars, you gotta admit, it's a little bit behind the times. I think we've...
It's not as big as Anadaga County.
No, we absolutely not.
Can't even find us a certain...
No, but we're talking about Oswego County.
Yes, Oswego County is small.
That's, no, it is, it is smaller, but a hundred and fifty dollars is a fair price to get two exams for something that important in your life. I, when I went to college, working for my book, I couldn't buy a book for under fifty dollars. Hundred and fifty dollars, to put things in perspective, is a very...
It's due to his age now.
That's right.
It's one fifty and seventy-five.
That's right.
When Mr. Vaughn first produced it.
But, but Mr. Vaughn was open, as he was before in the public hearing, when Joe Langlois did bring up some of his concerns. And that's what it is, these fees are fair, when we checked around town, they are very much in line, in fact, very much lower than many other communities.
Other larger communities in town.
Right.
But I checked with young men that are coming into the trade.
Mm-hmm.
And five out of six could not afford the two and a quarter for the testing.
They couldn't afford though?
No. Believe it or not, there are people that can't afford.
Oh, oh, I, I, you know, I believe that they might struggle, but if they want it bad enough, sometimes they do have to.
I myself, I'm on complete, total disability. I've gotta come up with two hundred dollars December thirty-first to pay for my license.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's a big chunk. Whether you have a lot of money or not, you have to be fair, and you have to consider we are a smaller city.
Absolutely. But I think these, these fees from, all my research, are very, very much, in, in fact, I still think they're behind the times. But we can't keep putting the burden on the taxpayer for the building of a home. We, we can't keep doing that. Our costs are sky high.
So you're putting it on the trees?
Well, at a one-time shot, I mean, for them to get the, the, um, the license, yeah, I think it's a fair cost. I do, Mr. Squater.
Well, I don't feel guilty.
I have one question, Mayor. Two things I'd like to state. I'd like to know the definition of contractors and, secondly, minimum liability insurance. What Ms. Trowbridge said and what this, a couple of comments have been made, if a homeowner, and I think Mr. Patrick said this, if a homeowner gets sued under the labor law in this state, the homeowner, let's say someone's doing work at the siding or whatever, the homeowner would be liable. What is minimum liability insurance? Are you saying $10,000? All the labor law cases that have been filed in Supreme Court in this county have clauses of a million dollars. They're suing for a million. That's what the homeowner gets sued for. Now, it doesn't mean that that's what they settled the case out for, that a jury comes back with a million dollars. They might come back with, you know, $100,000 or $200,000. So, what is minimum, you know, you're saying here, all contractors have minimum liability insurance?
See, the reason that was written that way, as you know, when you get car insurance, you can't walk into an insurance agency and get $5,000 of car insurance. The state sets the minimum.
$10,000. Who wants $10,000? If I get hit by somebody with $10,000, where am I going? They better have a million dollars if I'm a paraplegic.
Let me finish. That's something that was discussed between Mr. Vaughn and myself. You cannot buy liability insurance with a contractor. The state does set minimums.
But what's the minimum, Jerry?
The minimum, I believe, is $50,000. That is severely too low because, obviously, you wouldn't buy car insurance without limit. But, on the other hand, you also have to think of the cost.
Jerry, if you tell-
What are you going to pay?
-a contractor to come in with $50,000 minimum and they fall and that someone gets hurt, some of their siding comes down or their scaffolding comes down and hurts somebody, they're going to be sued for hundreds of thousands.
But-
And you're going to have to require them to have at least half a million dollars coverage.
You were the one that was arguing that cost too much.
Well, what, I'm asking you, what do you mean by minimum liability insurance?
The minimum you can get from-
$50,000, is that what you're going to require?
That is the minimum now. The minimum will obviously change through the course of time. I admit it's too low, but what does the state do with motor vehicles?
I don't agree with imposing the fee. And I don't know how you're going to police it. Good luck.
Somebody want to offer that?
Second. Before we vote, I'll just say with regard to fees, we should take a page out of the vote we took on the recreation user fees. This council received a lot of backlash by not conducting a public hearing. So, we are at the threshold of approving another fee schedule without the benefit of a public hearing, allowing the entire public to know that fees are going to be raised.
Yes.
Alderman Teramidji?
No.
Alderman Weston?
Yes.
Alderman Cavallaro?
Yes.
Alderman Trowbridge?
Yes.
Alderman Allen?
Yes.
Motion is carried, Your Honor.
As all the filing claims against the city are hereby referred to our city attorney for his action. Letter of claim submitted by Fanny Strike Wurda for damages to her vehicle alleged to have occurred on October 7th dove over a wet traffic paint on Route 481 across from the Quality Inn. Letter of claim submitted by William Patterson III for damages to Patterson Warehouse alleged to have occurred on September 9th and again on October 7th when the fire department was testing fire trucks and caused a pressure surge tripping the sprinkler system in the warehouse. Notice of claim submitted by Simak Hembasi for damages alleged to occur on or about August 8th, 1994 due to the actions of various city officials.
Do you want to move that?
I'll move it.
I'll start with it.
And the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Resolved that the proposed amendment to Chapter 173 of the city code, which would add subsection 173-2A entitled Water Activation Fee per the letter from the city attorney dated October 11th, 1994, is hereby approved. Be it further resolved that this fee would be in the amount of $35.
Anybody want to offer that?
I'll move it.
Second?
I'll second. I'd like to explain this reactivation fee. The reactivation fee on the water, this is mainly what happened to protect the taxpayers from people coming in and leaving for Florida and trying to escape the minimum water fee or the garbage bill. And it's mainly in here to protect the garbage, the garbage fee that we just reactivated. We would send our servicemen out, we would disconnect the meter and then we pay to put it back in. I mean, we'd have no cost to put it back in. It took time, it took labor, and it was to escape fees that the water department counts on to keep our water costs at a minimum or not to raise the fees again. And that's the purpose of the legislation.
Please call the roll.
Alderman Lincoln?
Yes.
Alderman Teramidji?
Well, this certainly is a fee that's going to affect a lot of people. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but when you deactivate a water meter, it's simply locking it off. I don't know if it takes a lot of time and effort to do that. Or even if you do take it out entirely, it's minimal job. $35 is going to hit somebody pretty hard when they find out about this in public hearing.
Thank you.
Alderman Weston? I would just ask Kathy on if she would know, how many, how many people does that affect?
I'm not sure of an exact figure. They've estimated around 60, 60 to 100 people sometimes leave and do this. Not all of them, but it is for that purpose.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Alderman Cavallaro?
Yes.
Alderman Trowbridge?
Yes.
Alderman Allen?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to sign a one-year maintenance agreement between Semplex Time Recorder, City of Fulton, commencing on January 1, 1995, with the alarm system in the municipal building at a cost of $500. Cost to be at direct charge to the building account. Somebody want to offer that?
I'll move it.
Mr. Allen? That's the service, is it $511 or $500?
It's $500, Jim. If we pass it tonight and I get to them on the phone tomorrow, we can save $11 by passing it before November 3rd. Yes. Although, yes, every dollar helps. And the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Resolved that city clerks' reported receipts and disbursements for the month of September in the amount of $9,635.47 is hereby received, approved and placed on file.
Move it.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Whereas the insurance committee, including the members of the common council serving on the committee, have investigated the procedures and policies whereby the city purchases liability insurance and fire insurance. Whereas the insurance committee has recommended to the common council its findings that the city should solicit quotes on liability insurance and fire insurance every three years. And whereas the insurance committee also recognizes that the economic factors and other conditions may dictate the necessity of soliciting quotes for a period of other than three years. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the common council acknowledge receipt of the insurance committee's findings on the policy of quote solicitation and liability insurance and fire insurance as stated above. And be it further resolved that the common council will solicit bids in 1995 for liability insurance and fire insurance and every three years thereafter, subject to such economic factors and other prevailing conditions that dictate the necessity of different policy periods.
Somebody want to offer that?
I'm going to move it with comment, if I may, if there's a second.
I'll second for discussion.
The committee unanimously agreed to this resolution. And let me make it clear that this does not lock us into a three-year policy term. What it's saying is that we won't necessarily go out for bid every year. It has been past practice. The agency that we're presently dealing with or would be presently dealing with at any given point in time would have to re-quote his policy every year. What we're saying is that it's very complicated and time-consuming to go out for bid every year. It's very time-consuming on part of the agencies as well as the city. And I think if there is the notion that there could be a three-year contractor or the contract would be ongoing for three years, that we might get better consideration from an agency. And I think we've talked to several of the agents that have in the past bid to the city and they all seem to concur with our findings. Jim, you want anything to add?
I believe you said it.
Call the roll, please.
Alderman Lincoln?
Yes.
Alderman Teramidji?
Yes.
Alderman Weston?
Yes.
Alderman Cavallaro?
Yes.
Alderman Trowbridge?
Yes.
Alderman Allen?
Yes.
Motion is carried, Your Honor. Whereas new hockey boards have been badly needed at the community center ice rink and whereas at the time of fiscal crisis, city recreation department had not had the funds necessary to have these constructed. Whereas Ernie Corvey, who works at Elkan and lives at 67 South Powder Drive here in Fulton, purchased the aluminum material at a substantial discount in order to build new ice hockey boards. Whereas Fran Catalon and Doug Carroll of CNC Fabrications, Inc., located at 159 Hubbard Street here in Fulton, donated their time and professional services in order to build the ice hockey boards at the city's ice rink. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor, members of this council, on behalf of the people of the City of Fulton, wish to thank Fran Catalon, Doug Carroll and their staff of CNC Fabrications for donating their time and professional services and also Ernie Corvey for his efforts in providing the material at a significant savings for the construction of these ice hockey boards at the community center ice rink, which truly benefits the youth of the greater Fulton area and saved the city approximately $3,000 in labor and material costs. And be it further resolved that this resolution of application, appreciation be spread upon the official minutes of this council meeting of November 1, 1994 and a copy of it be transmitted to Fran Catalon, Doug Carroll and Ernie Corvey.
I don't think those people are here, I think.
No?
No. Move it.
I'll start with it.
And the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. And I do thank them very much personally.
Resolved that the city clerk is hereby authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held on December 6th. At 7:00 PM, the council chambers and municipal building Fulton, New York, to consider the proposed 1995 budget of the City of Fulton, New York. And that said advertisement should advise senior citizens, handicapped citizens and their respective organizations that they have had an opportunity to be heard. Be it further resolved that the said proposed 1995 budget shall be complete and available for public inspection at the office of the city clerk in the municipal building Fulton, New York during the week prior to the public hearing.
Somebody want to move that?
Second.
Did you put a date in there? Was there a date in there?
December 6th.
Oh, December 6th.
Yes. I got a question on that date. Clerk states that he will need one week in advance of that date to have that prepared for public inspection. Is that going to give us enough time? I mean, we're talking-
This is tentative date right now. That's what we're going to talk about, scheduling the budget meetings right towards the end of the meeting. We could do that now. You want to do that now? I mean, yeah, we do have to have enough time and we want to get in some schedules. So, how would the council feel about starting the budget process Thursday, meet Thursday with the city chamberlain and with Joe Tejero and then set a final schedule to go out with the department heads as of next? We try to get it done as quick as we could.
Sooner the better.
Yeah.
Thursday?
Thursday, just as an organizational-type meeting and then set a final schedule so we can get notice to the department heads in a decent time.
Thursday is what hour?
It's good, 6 o'clock, 6:30, doesn't matter. It's our, it's our working meeting, so it's certainly up to the council.
How about 1,900 hours?
1,900?
1,900 hours.
Fine.
1,800?
1,900.
1,900?
1,900. 7 o'clock?
You got it.
7 o'clock?
7 o'clock's good for me.
Is that fine with everybody else on Thursday?
We have a motion, so.
The motion and second, and the motion?
Oops.
Second?
Wait a minute, let's hold up on this for a minute. You want to leave the December 2nd date?
It's tentative. It's tentative, sure.
Okay. And the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
I guess we got a one-week buffer there anyhow.
Yeah.
To the 13th was the-
Yeah.
Resolved the scheduled bills payable '88 through '91 of 1994, which has previously been approved by the common council auditing committee, are hereby approved.
You want to move that?
I'll move that.
I'll start with it.
And the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Resolved that this common council hereby accepts a quote submitted by Carmen Vescho, Inc., September 28th, 1994, in the amount of $1,360 for floor repairs at Fulton Public Library.
I'll move it.
I'll start with it.
As all of you know, the library had some major structural problems and the floors started cracking and as an emergency measure, they had to move the books and the shelving. And this is to complete the repairs to the library. And the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Resolved that the crossing guard position at Anita Street and Anita Ellis Drive is hereby eliminated per the recommendation submitted by Police Lieutenant Rabior dated October 25th, 1994.
I'll move that.
Second.
Are there just not very many kids over there anymore?
The danger's on and the kids are- Two kids.
Oh, okay.
Did we miss an item on the agenda or? No.
Oh, we moved several around.
We moved item 21.
You're on 28 now.
Yeah, we moved 21 and 17.
You just read 29 now. According to mine, unless it's changed.
You got a new agenda. This is the new agenda here.
Okay.
You have a different agenda.
I'll second it.
Good one, John.
All in favor of that? Motion by John Lincoln? Hi.
And the motion, all in favor?
Say aye, Joe.
Joe said aye.
Any opposed?
Okay. We moved item 29 down to the, to last. Resolved that the proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance for Chapter 177, 19.1, entitled Screening Device Regulations per letter from City Attorney dated October 26, 1994, is hereby referred to the Planning Commission for the review and recommendation to be returned to this council at a future meeting.
I'll move it.
And the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Resolved that subsection 165-14, the vehicle traffic ordinance, City of Fulton, New York, entitled Restricted Access Areas be amended to read as follows. Add, F, "No person or persons, firm, association, corporation or co-partnership shall operate any truck or trucks on South 7th Street between Fay Street and Quanis Park for the purpose of removing snow from any industry or business, with the exception of the City of Fulton
Would like to comment on that, Mayor, for me.
Uh, this resolution actually goes back to seventy-seven, as some residents may recall. Um, it was apparently passed back then, from what I'm told, but never, uh, got into the charter. And one of the, one of the issues that brought this about, uh, and some may recall the story, I guess there was a young girl killed, or struck by a truck, uh, near the Quanis Park at the end of South Seventh Street, uh, that year, or just the prior year. Consequently, the, the, the traffic department has in fact been putting up these, uh, signs restricting, uh, s- heavy trucks in, uh, snow removal on that, uh, section of South Seventh Street, uh, along Nestle's plant. Matter of fact, the signs were up just last season. Uh, however, the resolution could not be found in the charter. So, we're updating the charter by passing this resolution again, I guess, is what it amounts to. So, I would like to move that. Second it?
I'll second it.
And the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
We have one absent. He followed Alderman Cavallaro. Tim, you're next.
Motion is carried with, uh, Alderman Lincoln absent.
For the record.
Oh, there he is now. For the record.
And that's the motion.
Oh, for...
No. Just, just, we are favoring...
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Resolved that, uh, nineteen eighty-seven dash two sewage treatment plant capital project is hereby offic- officially closed.
I'll move it.
That'd be a good one.
And the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Resolved that DPW Commissioner is hereby authorized to negotiate with the town of Freedom, New York, to purchase the nineteen eighty-two Oshkosh plow for an amount not to exceed seventeen thousand dollars. Get the vehicles in good condition and satisfactory to the inspection of the commissioner. Said cost to be a direct charge to the A fifty-one forty-two point two snow removal account. Be it further resolved, city chamberlains hereby authorized, directed to tras- transfer the purchase amount from the con- A nineteen ninety contingent account to the A fifty-one forty-two point two snow removal account to cover the cost. Uh, I, I want to talk about this for a minute. The city has six plows. Five of the plows range from nineteen sixty-six to nineteen seventy-two. One of the plows is two or three years old, I think, too. The last plow, the last Oshkosh that we purchased, was a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, plus or minus. I looked at the new plow on Thursday that is now a hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. These are, these, this equipment is used only to plow snow, which is why it has a long life. One of the problems that we have with the plows are that if they break, we can't get parts for the sixty-sixes. They, the last breakdown we had, we had to get used parts from Missouri from a, a broken-down The DPW Commissioner discovered that there is one being offered for sale by the town of Freedom, which is southeast of Jamestown. Freedom is a very, very small town, very sparsely populated. They get a limited amount of snowfall, and there are, they have a nineteen eighty-two Oshkosh that they haven't used in two years. They plow their roads with ten-wheel trucks. Plow comes with a one-way blade, which is the kind of blade that we use, has a wing, and it has a salt box. The salt box is new, about forty-five hundred dollars alone. Commissioner would like the authority to negotiate with the town of Freedom, which is a legal way of purchasing equipment, uh, up to seventeen thousand dollars for that vehicle. Tremendous cost savings, and it's, uh, effectively a ten-year-old vehicle, and supposedly, based on the conversations, it's supposed to be in good, good condition. I would appreciate it dearly if the media would not print seventeen thousand dollars until after Thursday, until after Thursday. As it's harmful to our negotiating position with the town, or the town to somehow or another find out how high, how much money we would pay for that vehicle.
Are you buying that for use now? Or are you buying that for power?
No, we're buying it because it, it works. It's a good, it's perfectly functional plow. We're told, he wants, he's going to inspect it tomorrow, yeah. But I would just appreciate, when you do a news story on this until after Thursday, that you have mentioned the seventeen thousand dollars. That's all. It, it's harmful to our negotiating position. If, if the town of Freedom knew that we were going to pay seventeen, and we could buy it for fourteen, that's all I ask. Somebody want to walk with that? Mr. Allen?
I'll second it, sorry.
And the motion, uh, just call the roll, please. Alderman Lincoln?
Yes.
Alderman Teramidji?
Yes.
Alderman Weston?
Yes.
Alderman Cavallaro?
Yes.
Alderman Trowbridge?
Yes.
Alderman Allen?
Yes.
Motion is carried. One item remains, and I'll discuss it briefly. I will not go into a great deal of detail. Uh, common council was submitted a budget for nineteen ninety-five, and it is a proposed budget. The budget was drafted on the basis of maintaining all existing city services, providing a balanced budget, and provide for a reduction of the deficit which we have. The proposed budget, uh, accomplishes each of those goals. It is in fact a balanced budget. It is a responsible budget, and it also provides for a quarter of a million dollars worth of deficit reduction, plus some modest funds to start addressing some of the storm drainage problems that we have in, in the city. I think some of you saw them today. We carried a shortfall of last year's budget into this year of four hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. And in addition, in the nineteen ninety-four budget, which was not a balanced budget, there was some four hundred thousand dollars, uh, shortage in the medical insurance fund alone. We've tried to cover all of those bases with this budget. Basically, the budget provides for a forty-one dollar and thirty cent per, the budget as it's proposed, provides for a forty-one dollar and thirty cent per thousand tax increase, uh, per thousand of assessed value, which will cost the average homeowner about a hundred and twenty-four dollars a year, or ten dollars a month. This is the first balanced budget that I'm able to see since at least nineteen ninety. It's the first budget that has addressed deficit reduction. City can no longer go on spending more each year than it takes in. And most, all of the levels of funding that are proposed remain at the level that they were this year, with the exclusion of those costs which we cannot control, such as medical insurance, uh, increases in things like road salt, and items of those, of, of that nature, utility costs, and so on. Council will be working between now and its scheduled public hearing to, I'm sure, reduce this proposal even more. However, I wanted them to be handed a budget based on the criteria of maintaining all city services, hopefully no layoffs in existing departments, providing a balanced budget, providing for deficit reduction.
Uh, that's a great, great thing you've got mine there, but nowhere does it address labor. I'm tired of the head in the sand attitude towards labor. We've worked eleven months without a contract. Eleven months, Mayor. We have not put any pressure on this council at all. We haven't gone to the press, we haven't done anything. It's been like, we won't address the issue, it'll go away. Well, it's not going to go away. We want a contract. I know you're dealing with the police now, that doesn't mean you can't deal with us, too.
No problem.
We gotta have a contract.
No problem. I know your personal situation, why you...
I'm not talking personally about myself. I'm talking about the thirty-eight guys down there right now, and the other two hundred and twenty other city employees that are working without a contract. And you cannot address this budget while dealing with labor.
Is there, uh... Let me ask you a question. Is there anything in your existing contract that we're not honoring?
Benefit-wise, no, you can't. It's according to law, you have to.
Okay.
But we have not dealt with any pay raises, and you just said that all, everything goes to existing costs of last year. You haven't dealt with this year's labor cost. You haven't even talked to us about it.
Uh, let me, let me ask you this. Do you, uh, how much of a pay raise did the people...
I'm not, I'm not negotiating in this session.
No, I, but I, I think you, you, you're raising the issue. I think I'm entitled to an answer. Uh, how big a pay raise did the Reynolds guys say to...
I'm not negotiating here tonight. I just want some movement towards the negotiations.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
That, that was just a point I was going to bring out, Your Honor. Here we, uh, heard from Reynolds Metals, uh, uh, people who, who took a reduction in pay just to keep the plant going. And, uh, uh, everybody should be thankful that they have jobs, and that's the important part. Now, uh, maybe you haven't had a raise in, in, in eleven months, but you're working...
Yeah, I didn't say one thing about pay raises. I said contract.
No, I, I'm sorry, you did, you did say pay raises.
You, you asked what was, was the meaning.
Yeah, you said, you, you did say the word pay raises.
According to law, you have to add everything in our contract under the pay rate. That's the only, the only reason I was mentioning.
Okay, thank you. Motion to...
Mayor, Mayor, I'm not sure what the budget is going to say. I mean, if it's ten dollars a month, I'm going to talk to my committee, and we'll see where it goes, and with my committee members. Don't be brow-beaten by anyone, and I know you are, and you, you have a strong personality. These people come up to the microphone, and they say, remember us, this, that, and the other thing. Well, remember one thing, too. In the county of Oswego, last year, we had like ten percent or more unemployment, much higher than Anadaga County. And people ought to be thankful that they have a job, and that they're working, and that they, maybe that they have medical insurance coverage, and they're not collecting welfare or unemployment, et cetera, et cetera, and that they're not one of the Miller Brewery employees without a job. I want you to think of the fourteen thousand people here in this city, okay? When you're thinking of tax increases, and thinking of, maybe there's certain factions that are saying, well, we gotta, you gotta give us something. Well, that's true. That's true, Mayor. I mean, my, my employees do the same thing. I do a good job. I want to be rewarded. I want to be paid. That's fine, but how much is enough? How much is enough? How much do we have to pay? We can take a little bit of an increase. I've always said that. Okay? A little bit. But when you're starting to hit us maybe forty, fifty, seventy percent tax increase, we're going to draw the line. We will draw the line. Okay? Just so you know where we're coming from.
Thank you.
That's good.
Mayor?
Love those jury. I just want to make a quick comment, and I think there's some people who won't appreciate this, but I got to say it anyway. Keep talking about an eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar deficit, and I just want to point out that the four hundred thousand shortfall you were left with, if you add on the two hundred that you got from Miller that you weren't expecting, and a hundred thousand in garbage fees that you're getting, and the forty-four thousand you saved by having a lieutenant service city administrator, and the thirty thousand you saved for having an engineer abolished, there's your three seventy-five right there. I think it's terrible that a deficit is being blamed on the administration previous to you that also inherited one. And I would also like to point out, it's my understanding, last year when the Valet administration was looking at a tax increase, you, Your Honor, were given the choice of a three percent or a six percent tax increase, and asked them to go with the three, saying that you would work out the difference, and decided to take off three hundred thousand right off the insurance account. It's also my understanding that the insurance committee has had a plan to reduce medical insurance expense for the city that was given to you in a letter dated January nineteenth, and to date you still haven't acted on that. So, I just want to point that out.
Just, I'm, I'm glad that you made those statements, because just, please, please state it. Just for the record, there's not one true statement in anything that you said. As a matter of fact, I stood at the public hearing on December twenty-eighth, nineteen ninety-three, and opposed the budget that was passed, and I sat in on all the budget negotiations. Mr. Lincoln voted against that budget. Mr. Lincoln knows full well my position on that budget. So, no, I had no agreement. Mr. Valet, former Mayor Valet, never once spoke to me about that budget, that entire budget, and this entire council will vouch for that, was put together by Alderman Meyer and Alderman Crook, and they said night after night, and had a tax increase of some six or eight percent proposed. And that budget was cut on December twenty-eighth, nineteen eighty-three, to what it was. Four hundred thousand was taken out of medical, a hundred thousand dollar principal payment on a bond was pulled out, road salt increases which were notified to the city in November of nineteen ninety-three were removed from the budget. The YMCA problem was taken from the budget, and if you want to sit and look at the nineteen ninety-four budget that this council was left, I'll be glad to spend about thirty minutes going over it line by line.
I'd like to do that with you personally, because I do have a copy of that, and I would like to ask again, you know, why couldn't the dollars you received from Miller be applied to that?
Dollars from Miller were applied to that.
And, and you still have another four hundred thousand short on the budget?
Just got done telling.
Well, it's a good thing I guess that Mr. Iello can give us a discount and that, by you. Um, were you given a, a plan to reduce the medical insurance expense by the insurance committee?
May I answer that, Mayor? He was given suggestions and recommendations, but no concrete plan. Uh, that's being worked on to some degree right now.
Do you know when those were, suggestions were made?
Soon as possible.
No, when were the suggestions made?
I don't have it with me, it's not dated, but I can let you know.
In the last thirty days, six months, at least? No idea?
But the medical insurance plan is part of the union negotiations and the contract negotiations...
Right.
Which we're attempting to resolve.
Right, but what I'm saying is, some suggestions were made to you a long time ago on how to maybe approach reducing the medical insurance costs. And if that was a long time ago, I don't think it's prudent to step up a month before the end of the year and say, well, hey, you know, we've got this big expense, what, what can I do if there was a way you could have reduced that by possibly, you know, negotiating a contract six or eight or ten months ago? I mean, they've been going without a contract since January first, and this is a golden opportunity for the city. Right now, you've got all three unions without a contract, and you can sit down and say, this is the way it's going to be.
No, you can't do that.
But you can negotiate it, can't you?
But you can't say this is the way it's going to be.
Then they make another op...
You know that.
No, but you can negotiate.
You can't. But that's not the same as saying that's the way it's going to be. The firemen and the police have the right of arbitration. We can't dictate much of anything to them.
But they don't also have the right to come back to the city and say, this is the way it's going to be, sign on the line? I mean, that's why it's negotiated.
But if, if we're going to take something away from them, we have to pay for it. It's as simple as that.
Okay, and these expense reduction items, like medical insurance, you've been working on that for a long time, Alderman?
We have had meetings as early as February with the fire department.
Okay.
We have had union negotiations with the police department. We have had preliminary negotiations with the CSCE.
All right. Now, I'd like to, after this, I'd like to get a date and a time when I can sit down and see and go over this.
I'd like to add a couple of things to that conversation. Uh, number one, Joe Cavallaro and the insurance committee have been working on this. I can't tell you how many meetings they've had. Uh, the committee is comprised of our insurance agents and aldermen, and, uh, they have worked tirelessly to produce a program, and it's not that easy to, with something as, uh, complex as medical, to come up with. They've got a lot of different options, and I'm sure that they're going to come to a conclusion. But as, uh, the attorney said, it's a, it's still a negotiable thing. You just can't make it happen because you want it to happen. The other thing, too, though, I think that, um, Alderman Cavallaro did some homework on, on why do we have the deficit? Why were we faced with a four hundred and forty-four thousand dollar deficit? And I'd like him to just, if he would, please, just tell us a couple of those figures. I don't have my paper with me.
I don't have mine with me either.
But basically, it had to do with reduction in state aid. The state aid in nineteen...
Well, there was a substantial from nineteen... Well, there was a substantial from nineteen ninety. Started out, we had one million, one seventy-four. Joe Tietro maybe could help me with this, because we talked about it today. In nineteen ninety-one, it dropped to seven hundred and thirty-some thousand. And then I believe in ninety-two, it dropped to six hundred and sixty-four thousand. Ninety-three remained six hundred and sixty-four thousand. And in ninety-four, it went up slightly to seven hundred thousand. So between ninety and ninety-two, that difference was approximately four hundred and fifty-thousand dollars. And at the same time period, from ninety to ninety-four, there was a substantial reduction in taxable assessed property tax, which amounted to perhaps another eight hundred and forty-some thousand. So combined, from ninety till, till today's date, if you add those two figures together, you're talking about one million four. Over the last eight years, it should interest the council to know, and I, I can't give it to you this year, but the industrial portion of the tax base used to pay around nearly eighteen, I think it was seventeen point nine percent of the total revenues in the city. They're currently paying around nine percent. And that burden has fallen on the homeowner. The portion, this was as of last year, I used the statistic at, at last year's budget hearing. In the same eight-year period, the portion of revenue contributed to the city by the residential and commercial property taxpayers increased five hundred and twenty-six or so percent. It's incredible, and it's because of, of two problems. Number one, a drop in state aid, and number two, reductions in industrial assessments that have been grieved. Sir? Yes.
Colonel, will you be looking into full value assessment at any future date? Because I remember during Murrell's administration, that was one of your causes you championed.
Yes, as a matter of fact, we put together a capital improvements plan, and there is ninety thousand. Is it not correct, Mr. Labota, ninety thousand in the capital improvement budget to do that? That's one of the reasons that the industry continue to get tax reductions, is there's no yardstick, there's no twelve inches equal a foot as an industrial measurement. And there's a lot of discrepancies in residential and commercial assessments as well. So you can really pretty much prove any kind of a case you want to prove just by doing a little research in the field. If everything were standardized, you'd have a yardstick to measure an industry by or a residence by. It's one of the problems you have.
I also would like to comment on the medical again. From the first time that we had been elected and going into office, we sat in on the budget meetings, but had very, we had some input, but the final result certainly wasn't, wasn't our doing. But from the start, the city clerk, Joe Tietro, cautioned the people working on the budget that, once again, we have to be realistic with what the medical costs were, and that we should budget accordingly. And once again, where we knew that the, the budget was going to be over a million dollars, it was budgeted at seven hundred and-
Seven twenty, general fund.
Seven hundred and twenty thousand.
General fund.
So we knew right up front, there was no way we could meet that figure. It's based on, you're hoping that people aren't, aren't getting sick. But that doesn't happen, and it's been, they, I think they've been carrying that type of thing for the last, how many years, Joe?
What did I say, about, about four or five years?
For four or five years, they've been under-budgeting medical every year. So what we're saying is, we can't, if we're going to have a balanced budget, we're not going to, we're going to work with realistic figures. We're going to get, try to get the budget as low as we possibly can, but at the same time, we have to be realistic, we have to work on the deficit and try to get that down, and we can't under-budget an item that we know is going to be high.
Well, as long as we're talking medical, I can't get to bed. I act too among that medical insurance committee. John Crook, former alderman, who, who himself is an accountant, has taken the approach, had took the approach that you cannot just keep throwing money at this fire pit. He said, whoever wanted to listen, you've got to address this medical insurance. And what Mr. Thompson alluded to, I presented the mayor on January nineteenth, a proposal. Basically, contracts are due, lock and load, and get it done. That's all the proposal said. We dragged on for ten months. Our medical committee went from a two-page report, it is this thick and growing by the month. We have not addressed it, and I think we can. With regard to the budget proposal, nineteen point six percent, when I read it in the Oswego Valley News, or rather, the Valley News, on Wednesday, what the mayor had to say, or Thursday, what the mayor had to say, I sat down at the computer and fired off a two-page rebuttal. I'm not going to belabor the council at this late hour with this. I'll just say, nineteen point six percent is not right. We can slice that in half, with two line items I looked at, we'll slice that down to a six percent, if the council is ready to cut to the bone and do what we should do. And I won't go on any further.
Jim, I mean, I want you to think that if we had this conversation, we're all willing to do what we should do. I just don't want you to think, or for the public to think, that at any time, we're not willing to sit down here, pull up our sleeves, and deal with the reality. I just wanted to make that clear.
I understand. That's why I'm not going to debate it any further.
Well, that's why the budget workshops start Thursday, and, you know, we're going to look at everything.
Not at this time. I, I could reveal it later. However, if you want to, want a copy of this, you can read it in here.
I'm asking questions tonight, not to be difficult, but to learn. For instance, I learned something tonight about trash dumping. For weeks, we kept finding letterheads and envelopes and letters coming and going from Sal Lanza's law office. Couldn't figure out what they were doing to my driveway. Since he lives two blocks from me, we've solved that mystery. The phantom dumper.
Good night, good night.
Good night. Procedure's on the budget. Now, according to the city charter, I believe, it's done by all the councilmen, correct? They all sit down together. Now, you have a proposed budget, but they haven't seen it yet?
No, they haven't.
Well, you've seen it.
Sure.
So you all put that budget together?
No.
After it was constructed?
I merely collected the information, reviewed it, sent it back because it was inordinately high. I, it is not the mayor's prerogative to cut services. It is, it's a legislative function. And I merely prepared the document through the department heads to present to the council, and tried to do it in a responsible way within the parameters I see.
And someone help you, someone that knows about budgets, for instance, Mr. Tietro. That's the case. Now, Thursday, you're going to go over the budget line by line.
That's what their process will be to start.
So it's not cut in your eye. We're not, we don't have the cart before the horse.
No. That's the starting point of a budget. It is not the mayor's, it is not the mayor's prerogative to start eliminating services and those kind of things. Tried to give them a base, a, a prudent and responsible base to start with. They, I'm sure that they will find places to cut.
I hope so. That's their job. That's why they were elected, to represent the people.
Exactly right.
To be sure we have a voice in how the money is spent.
Sure.
I said the cart before the horse. I'm going to go back to one little thing here. You voted tonight on the Bureau of Code Enforcement. I think the cart was before the horse, because for months, he's been using the title, you've been using the title. And he has been sending out literature and letterheads with that title on it, and now tonight you voted on it.
He was given the title.
He was given the title before you voted on it?
He was given the title how many meetings ago? Do you remember? Yeah, he was given the title by resolution.
By resolution.
Many months ago. We could get you a copy of that.
Okay. Third, I'd like to make a recommendation to Mrs. Trowbridge. I'd like to have you start up a scholarship fund. For all the young fellows that come along that can't afford the hundred and fifty bucks, you'll pay it.
I don't think-
Because apparently to you, it's not a lot of money.
No, and I didn't say that. I said it was fair. Everything's a lot of money these years.
I'm going to have the newspapers print that. You're starting a scholarship fund.
I would do that.
Thank you. I won't bother anymore tonight.
Motion to have an executive session.
I'll move it.
The motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's carried. We will not be back out this evening.